Hello, select people.
Pete.
Hi, Chris.
Gus, nice tie, Gus.
Yeah, I figured you know, it's like, one of these days, the crisis is gonna be over and it'll be my last chance to take the time to do this. I didn't put a, I didn't put a suit jacket on, though.
Did you have any trouble tying the tie after all this time?
It was, it took a while. It took a while. I started at five. Actually, it's not so bad in November. It's like, when you have to put a tie on in August, after you've been walking around for like, three months in shorts, in a, in a short sleeve shirt and, you know, flip flops or something like that, that tie is just brutal. But it wasn't too bad, actually. It was kind of, in a way, it's kind of, you know, it's a different look from what I've gotten used to for most of this year, so it's a good thing.
Just trying to get everybody promoted that needs to be promoted. I think that's the warrant committee and the school committee. Am I missing anybody, Jess?
Let me look. I don't have my glasses on. Alright, so I've got Anime. I've got a lot of people here. And they keep changing. Okay, so why do I only see Megan?
Go to your gallery.
Leo, okay.
We need Tim.
Anime and Tim. And then I assume that you'll bring Jeff over when he comes over. Or, you know.
He's, he's here.
Is he? Oh, there he is. Okay.
I don't see Tim. So.
Now, we could.
Well, what we're doing is, Pete, why don't you start and read the governor's opening and call the selectmen's meeting to order, and then we can continue with the warrant committee and then the school committee.
Okay. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 10, 2020. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law is Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, Order Imposing a Strict Limitation on the Number of People That May Gather in One Place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting, while in progress, may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation and therefore will be roll call votes. And a reminder that the meeting is being recorded. The select would always take a moment to appreciate our troops who are serving around the globe, so we can do that now. Thank you. So the selectmen this evening are having a joint meeting with the school committee and the warrant committee to discuss the FY 2021 Medfield Public Schools budget and to discuss budget appropriations due to increases in Chapter 70 State Aid. And I think we need the school committee just to be called to order.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Midfield School Committee to order by roll call. Anime O'Shea Brook?
Here.
Leo Bram?
Here.
Megan Glenn?
Here.
Tim Knight?
Here.
And Jessica Riley here, and we are called to order.
Excellent, thank you. And then Sharon Tetro, if you want to call the warrant committee to order.
Sure thing. I, Sharon Tetro, here by call the warrant committee to order. I'll also do a roll call. So Thompson?
Here.
Christine Barton?
Here.
Amanda Hall?
Here.
Bob Slaney?
Here.
Jeremy Marset?
Here.
And Ed Vazella?
Here.
And Sharon Tetro here. Back to you.
So Chris, how, who's gonna go forward with this at this point?
I think the chairman of the school committee, Jessica Riley, is prepared to talk about it. She had initially requested the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Jess, you're on then. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Pete. So the reason that we've called this tonight is that as we have been going through the school budget for the year and the the CARES Act money that we are sharing with the town at this point and the 106 grant, I'm sorry, the 102 grant, that the state gave to us for $2.25 per student for COVID-related expenses. It has come to our attention that the the rate at which we are going through COVID-related expenses is much, much higher than anybody could have ever anticipated. And that in terms of flexibility of funding, both of those grants end December 30th, and we have some requirements around what we are able to put into that grant, and very little ability to pre-buy or put future expenses from, for the rest of the fiscal year into the CARES Grant or the 102 grant. So initially, when speaking with the warrant committee, what is it, two weeks ago now, we kind of jointly decided that it was important to call a meeting of all of us to really investigate what sort of options we had around how we might fund the COVID-related expenses for the rest of the year, knowing that they are unpredictable in terms of how much time we are able to be in school, how long the epidemic lasts, and what other sorts of funding might come to us that we did not necessarily know about, or that we don't know about now. So there's a lot of kind of unpredictability to it. But we also know that the state has sent, or the state has committed level funding of Chapter 70 money that goes directly to the town. And so we called this meeting tonight, as we've been having conversations kind of individually about how to manage this, to really figure out what is the best way to enable the town to to maintain its finances and its stability as we're going to bond on the Dale Street, on the Dale Street Project, to understand the time crunch we have around the tax rate being set by December 1st for fiscal year '21, and knowing that we will have kind of a significant overage of expenses that we could never have predicted. So we've been talking about a lot of solutions. I think that our initial thought was that we would were wondering if there would be a possibility to call a special town meeting before that December 1st date, and that seemed in my conversations and conversations around with different selectmen and with the warrant committee and with Jeff and that it seemed like that was a real time crush, that it was almost impossible to really have a truly transparent and also attendable town meeting, given that it's winter in New England almost. So then we kind of looked at a second option, which I will leave to Sharon to kind of explain to you more, but it essentially allows Chapter 70 to remain in free cash, and at the end of the, at these annual town meeting in May, God willing, that that should happen, we will present, or the warrant committee will present an article so that we are able to fund the expenses that we have done over and above what our original budget was for these COVID-related expenses out of free cash, assuming that the Chapter 70 money that is there will allow us to be able to have that kind of flexibility. Sharon, can I kind of throw over to you that that's the general idea?
Yes, that is the general idea, and then I am going to defer to Christine to explain it to us all much better than I could.
So I do know that Michael and Jeff have a presentation that they would like to go through around our COVID-related expenses, and with the chair, chair's permission, the joint chair's permission, could I throw that over to them so you kind of get a better understanding of where we are right now?
Absolutely, from this chair.
Okay. Thanks, Sharon. You good with that, Porter?
I'm good with that. Go right ahead.
Great. So Jeff and Michael, if you would like to start your presentation.
Michael, can you share your screen?
Is Nick sharing his screen?
Yes, Nick, I'll share your spreadsheet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity. I know that, you know, you have a lot on your your plate this evening, and thank you for letting us go over this. You know, Michael and I have been working on a spreadsheet that really details what we have spent so far in terms of COVID-19 expenses with, with both personnel and non-personnel, and then the fund sources that we are looking at. So 102 grant, the CARES Act and their operations. So, Michael, if you could just, I know you've done this now 10 times, it feels like, could you go through each fund source and what our projected cost and what's been expended since the 30th of October?
Sure, thank, and Jeff, just jump in at any time as I'm going through the, through the spreadsheet. So I want to just again echo what the superintendent said. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity just to share with you what the COVID expenses have been and what we're projecting moving forward throughout this school year. So there are three buckets that I've been talking about that we've been using to fund our COVID expense. One is the 102 grant. And what the 102 grant is, the federal government through the Department of Education, DSC, granted every community $225 per child for COVID-related expenses, which is in Medfield, it was $565,425. And then the town also received, I believe, $1.1 million in the CARES Act that we've been using also to offset our COVID expenses. And then the remaining of the costs have been have and will continue to come out of our operational budget. So that being said, we have a spreadsheet here that we're going to share with you, which I'm going to go from left to right. So on the left-hand side, it's the categories of where we have already expended and/or categories where we are projecting that we will be spending. Column 2 is any type of FTE, so those are additional hires that we needed to hire in order to cover our COVID mandates or requirements due to the educational plan that we currently have. Column 3 is what we are projecting our bi-weekly payroll to be. And then column 4 and 5 is unit cost per PPE and the quantity of what we have been purchasing and what we project to purchase moving forward. And then the next column is the projected cost, what we're projecting, the cost will be from November through June, depending on the different categories which I'll go into. And then the last column, which is column H, which is the expended, is what we have spent as of 10/30. So as we go down, you can see that, and again, Jeff, jump in anytime you want. We had to hire additional nurses and custodians to, to help us during this COVID time. And that was, and these are not permanent employees. These are either long-term subs or per diems. We're not, we're paying them a daily rate because they're not permanent employees. But for the nurses, we have 2.6 FTEs, which means that it doesn't just the full-time equivalent that we have in that category. And we're projecting our bi-weekly payroll for nurses to be about $4,924. We're projecting that the cost from, and this is where it might get a little confusing, because the projected cost for the first section, which is the 102 grant in the CARES Act, is from January 1st through June. So the 102 grant, the CARES Act expire on December 30th. So all expense from July 1st through December 30th only can be charged to these two categories during that timeframe. You know, and then after December 30th, those expenses have to then be brought into the operational cost, which is the last bucket that we're going to talk about. We're hoping and we're hopeful that there will be some type of federal relief coming sometime at the end of January or the beginning of February to help us to offset these costs. But as of right now, we've been told that the funding will stop as of December 30th. So we're projecting for the nurses from January through June, in addition to $29,545, we have spent $4,900 for custodians, $27,648, we've spent $7,165. We have what we call reopening stipends. These are stipends for employees that work throughout the summer to help with the reopening plan that's on our website. So there's, it was a cost associated with that. We still have about $4,700 worth of stipends to issue, but we already issued $61,250 in stipends. So medical gloves, you know, the unit price, when we purchased them, we're about 14 cents. We were looking into purchasing them, you know, to, again, looking at how can we continue to try to offset some of these costs? That, the gloves right now, the unit price for gloves is going up on a daily basis. Just so everyone knows, when we're dealing with PPE, we do go out, we do get three quotes prior to us purchasing. So you, if you, you're going to see that there's a spreadsheet on here that's one or two spreadsheet, and then a CARES Act spreadsheet, where you're going to see different vendors. So you'll see that we purchased gloves from, you know, a few different vendors, and that's because depending on when we purchased the order, and when the quotes go out, we use the lowest possible quote to purchase our PPE. So we're projecting that we need through the CARES Act to get us through December another 4,000 units of gloves, which is about another $554. We've spent $748 moving forward. You're going to see there's two line items for hand sanitizer, because we have the 16.9 ounce bottles that are on desks, and then we also have wall-mounted hand sanitizers throughout our schools. So those are, those unit prices are different depending, because it's just two different products. So between both, we're looking at approximately another, you know, $45,000 to spend to get us through December. In the CARES Act, we've spent about $2,900. We have disinfective wipes that we purchase. The question last night at the warrant committee, you know, how many wipes are you going through per month? I can tell you right now, we're going through between, between 80 to 100 thousand wipes per month. And these are wipes, when students come into the classroom, they wipe down the desk. When they're leaving the classroom, again, they wipe down the desk as they're leaving. So we're going through a lot of wipes. $24,000 that you see there should get us through the month of December, but we've already spent $62,000 in disinfective wipes. The next category is masks. We're looking at about another 24, excuse me, we, we're spent already $3,300 in that line item. Cleaning supplies, that's the disinfectant we're using to disinfect the schools. They come in 55 gallon drums. They are about $858 per drum, and we go through five drums a month. So that's, you know, about $4,300 per month for that cost.
We're disinfecting all day long. So we're doing high-touch areas, we're doing bathroom doorknobs, you name it, we're going through the school. So that, you know, that along with the additional custodians on the per diem rate, we have our staff just going through and cleaning all the time, whether they're, whether they're spraying the electrostatic guns and disinfecting hallways or high-touch areas there. So it's, it's non-stop. It's all day. It's not just, we do it at the beginning of the day, we do it at the end of the day. It's, it's cleaning the entire time kids are in the building.
So the next category is filters. We invested in MARV-13 filters for our rooftop units, and then we also invested in MARV-8s for our units that are in classrooms. So we're providing not only MARV-13 units, but also MARV-8 units. And those are switched out four, four times a year, and the cost per per switch out is about $9,000. We are actually in, coming up to November where the schools will be on Thanksgiving break, and all those filters will be changed out. And so the cost for that is $9,000. You're going to see there's a cost there for $7,800 because some filters came out of another line item. Throughout the summer, we did a lot of HVAC repairs. There was approximately almost $34,000 in HVAC repairs, and those are continuous repairs. So we have two, we have an engineering firm, and then we have train that we have contracts with that are going, are with us throughout the year for any type of repairs or maintenance that need to be made. We purchased air purifiers for Dale Street and Wheelock because their heating system is not as sophisticated, our HVAC system. So we purchased air purifiers for those buildings. We've had IT cost right now in the 102 grants, about $2,700, but we have a projection of $96,953. Jeff, do you want to talk about those Chromebooks that are in that line item?
Sure. So we had, we had Chromebooks that we use for MCAS only. What we did is we distributed all those Chromebooks to families that needed them. So we ended up distributing a couple hundred different devices, whether Chromebooks or iPads, to families that needed them through the, for the hybrid model. So we've also purchased, in addition to Chromebooks, to replace those cameras and speakers as we, we transitioned into more synchronous learning of live streaming in classrooms, especially at the high school and the middle school level. So we've installed cameras and speakers and microphones in those classrooms as well. So all those costs, again, nothing that we would have done, but we had to do that in response to the COVID-19.
Jeff, can you quickly just talk about why we need to have dedicated Chromebooks for MCAS? Because that's one of those expenses that seems like wouldn't be something that you would need to do, but we need to have basically computers.
Sure.
Because that is an unfunded mandate that.
Right, yeah. So, so DSC a couple of years ago required us to take the MCAS testing on a computer and make it digital instead of the paper, pen and paper, pencil and paper version of it. So we were one of the early adopters of that. We started a year before we had to, because we wanted to get our kids used to that, especially our younger kids. So we have third graders, they take their MCAS right on a Chromebook. So we, we had a whole group, and you have to put special software on that. So you have to really dedicate machines just for MCAS, and we had to wipe those clean and send those out to families. So now the new ones that are coming in will replace those.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure we knew that.
Yeah, the most, I think that really the important one is coming up in the CARES Act that Michael will get to, but the the purchase of the MacBook Airs for teachers to do their Zoom meetings and live streaming were, were critical to our educational model for this year. So that's another important IT purchase for us. Sorry, Michael.
No, no, thank you. So just to move forward, the other category was the miscellaneous stuff that we needed to purchase. That's about $15,000 projected, and we spent about $15,850. And those are, a lot of that was like such a signage. We had to get a lot of signage in for the buildings, but not just inside the building, but also outside the buildings. And then, like I said, in my 102 tab, we break that all out. So if you want the specific detail, it's out there. And then we had the one-time cost, and that's about $52,718. And those, again, were broken down into the other spreadsheet that that we have. So then moving forward into the CARES Act, we looked at, okay, you know, this is where you can buy certain PPE materials and kind of put them in stock. And then we have to look at the capacity that we have to, for, for storage for some of the stuff. So we feel that, you know, through the CARES Act right now, we're still going to need about 6,000 gloves, which is about $831. We, for hand sanitizer, which is the wall-mounted, we have already spent through the CARES Act, $57,671. As you can see, the rest of that is being projected under the 102 grant. We think we need about another 11,000 masks, which is about another $4,900. We've, we have spent about $18,000 in masks. Again, the cleaning supplies, which is our disinfectant, where because we can't store the disinfectant in the buildings, because these are 55 gallon drums, and the company that we go through will not store these, these gallons drums for us. We can only purchase what we can use. And we're looking at eight through the CARES Act, which is an additional $6,800. Again, that will get us through probably like a month and a half. The food service supplies, we spent about $2,400 already. There's the other category, which is about $1,200 that we spent, and then the one-time cost. This is where Jeff talked about the earbooks, that $347,000. Those are the earbooks that we purchased for the teachers. So moving down into the operational cost, currently, out of the operational cost, we spent about $54,000 in staffing. I think Jeff is going to elaborate a little bit more on the teachers and TAs. Those are additional staffing that we had to hire due to just the models that we were required to have that was approved by DSC. Those models, Jeff, do you want to talk about the different models that we?
Yeah, so, you know, we looked at, we were required to do a plan for full in-person, for hybrid and full remote, and that was a requirement for DSC. Every district had to do that. But one of the options that we had to provide families was a full remote option. So we have about 120 students right now that are full remote, and that was families that decided that they didn't want their kids to come to school this year, but we still want to obviously provide them education. So we do that in a full remote model for those students. So we had to have teachers that do that, obviously, because we need, every teacher that comes out of the classroom has to be replaced. So if a teacher goes to teach full remote, we have to replace that teacher in the classroom. So you see the 10.3 FTEs. It's not a full 10, it's not 10 people. It's, it's, some, some of these are fractional employees. So if we had someone that was, say, a .6 or .7 in special education, and If we had someone that was say a point six or a point seven in special education and we needed them to provide services for kids in the remote class. Then we would, we would try to bump them up to one point O. So we did that for a few people that were already employees. Some of them are definitely new employees though, because we had to replace teachers that were going into teaching the remote program. So. You know, again, that's a cost that you really couldn't anticipate when you're developing FY twenty one. And something that again, it's, it's like an unfunded mandate because we're required to offer that for, for families, but it's been hugely successful. Parents are very appreciative and kids are doing great in that model. But again, there's a price to that. As far as the TAs, we've added, we've added additional teacher assistance. A lot of that is around. How we have to manage the school day now in a hybrid model. So if we, for instance, if we're at recess. We can't have all of our kids outside of recess playing and doing what they do. We have to break it up into certain sections so that we need additional staff to watch kids. In K to five, we're having our lunches inside our classroom, not in a cafeteria. So you need more folks to. More bodies and more sets of eyes to watch kids as they're, as they're having lunch. So the other piece that we're trying to do is prevent having. People from the outside come in as substitute teachers. So we tried to get a couple of extra TAs in order to support any type of substitute teaching that's needed. Because those people are working in the building every day. We could just pull them and put them into that position as opposed to having someone from the outside coming in. We've been really, really careful about cross contamination of cohorts. You know, there are other districts that are, that are doing different kids and different cohorts on buses. We are not doing that. So we've been really careful about that. And, you know, there's, again, there's a cost associated with this. We're careful. We put safety as number one priority, but there's a cost associated with being, putting safety as number one priority.
So, so just move forward from that. So teachers and TAs, if you look at that column F for teachers, the four hundred thirty five thousand six hundred ninety seven. And the TAs, a hundred ninety one thousand nine twenty three. That's what we're projecting from November through June. Because we, if you look at the, the last column, we already have expended some of that, those dollars out of the operational cost. The nurses and custodians, that is the remaining amount. If we decide, if the school community decides that we're gonna continue to fund the nurses and custodians. Then we have, we ran out of that federal funding. We have to put those into our operational cost. And so the cost for the nurses, custodians, that's from January. Through June. So the projected cost from January through June for the nurses is about eighty four thousand. And for the custodian, we're projecting about sixty two thousand five hundred dollars. The next category is your kindergarten revolving teachers and your kindergarten revolving TAs. Because we're in the hybrid model currently, we're not charging full tuition to. Parents for students that are in the full day kindergarten program. We're paying for, we're only charging them half day, excuse me, half of the tuition. Which is a loss of two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. So in order to, for us to continue to pay our teachers, we have to move those. FTEs, which as you can see right there, there's a five teachers and five TAs back into the operational cost. And it's, and you know, the kindergarten revolving teachers is projected from January through June, a hundred ninety four thousand two forty eight. And the kindergarten revolving TAs is projected at about fifty eight thousand seven ninety four, which is approximately two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. That we are losing in revenue because of the, we're in a hybrid model. Now that could change.
I was gonna say, that being said, Michael, we notified parents of full day kindergarten. Students yesterday that we are looking to go into a four day week full time for those, for those full day K kids. So we're moving in that direction to get them back in. Our goal right now is, is probably the second week in December, December, it's December seventh. Is try to, to have our kids in full time at that point in kindergarten. So. Those numbers may change based on that, but right now we still have to work out transportation in order for us to successfully. Get full day kindergarten in for the entire day. We have to look at breaking up a few classrooms of kids that are already in there, moving about thirty kids or thirty five kids. And bringing in additional teachers and aides to support that. So we're gonna be using a gymnasium as a classroom. I mean, it's, it's, we're really moving things around to try to make sure that we get. We've really focused on our younger learners to get them in full time. We have our preschool kids in, in the same schedule they were in last year except for Wednesdays, but the same timeframe. And now we're trying to get our full day K kids back in as well. So those numbers could change based on, you know, how we, how we. Proceed the next three to four weeks.
And then the, the remaining categories are what we're projecting we need for PPE moving forward. To get us through January through June. Now these, again, these are our projections. We're doing our best to project what the costs are gonna be. So we're looking at, you know, operational expenses, additional. Operational expense due to COVID nineteen of approximately one point one million dollars. Last night, we were in front of the Warren Committee and it was mentioned that, you know, can we move some of that? Some of the salaries for teachers and TAs into the CARES Act. Just so it helps offset the operational cost and reduce that one point one million dollars down. Currently, Christine can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe between the schools and the towns, we spent about six hundred thousand. So there's approximately another six hundred thousand dollars available in CARES Act. So I projected out what would the cost be from September through December for the teachers and TAs. And we're looking at an addition, that's about two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. And that doesn't include the benefits. If we add the benefits on top of that, that number will go up. So we, that was a discussion we had with the Warren Committee that it makes sense because. These two categories are due to COVID nineteen expenses that we can move them into the CARES Act. And I believe we're having the meeting tonight to just to see if everyone agrees that moving those costs, the two hundred and twenty six thousand into the CARES Act. Will reduce that one point one million dollars down. And then, you know, Jeff just said that there's a possibility that, you know, that the revolving accounts. Could offset some of the costs that are currently on here. You know, and bring that one point one even lower. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I just, just to clarify that it's gonna be September to December for those, for the CARES Act.
Correct.
Yeah, just the salaries from September to December.
Yes.
Think we're, we're good, right, Michael?
Yeah, we're good.
Do they, I don't know, does Nick have access to all the backup that you have, Michael, for the sheets? I mean, that might be something just to quickly show people because you have every penny documented and where it came from, et cetera. So it might be important to see that as well. Now we showed the Warren Committee last night.
If I can say something right now, I think that one of the reasons that we're coming to you. Now is that we also want to make sure that there are no surprises. When we get to the end of the year and that this is also a bit of an issue around flexibility. If we had known that the state was going to be able to level fund our chapter seventy. Reimbursement and we had been able to incorporate that into our budget is entirely possible that we may not even be here right now. But because we have to submit our budget so early and because the state did not really know. How much money they could give us at the time. That's kind of led us to this rock and a hard place. Where we have to come back to the town after our budgets have been set to say, this is what we may need. And I know that one of the things that we've had real concerns about for a while, but we. Even in regular years, is the part of the charter that, for the town that requires that we. Submit our budget by January thirtieth, I think. And while we can't actually change that. It is a real concern going forward in our budget year for fiscal year twenty two. Because I don't expect the state to be any more certain in terms of. The funding that they will have. And I don't expect that we will know exactly. When many of these things that we have to spend money on will end. You know, it's. As much as I would like to say that, you know, like by next September, we will all be back to whatever normal is normal. We don't know that right now. So. I think I just want to make sure that we're being very transparent about the fact that. These are expenses that we could never have anticipated. We would like to be able to anticipate these expenses for next year if they exist. But again, because of the early net, the early date that we have. For submitting our budget to the town, it again kind of makes the flexibility. And our ability to kind of pivot if we should need to. It kind of takes that away from us a little bit. So. I think it's just worth putting out there and externalizing that that's really a problem. And one that we are gonna have to watch very carefully through the spring because we don't have any options. Around submitting a budget by January. But it could end up meaning that we end up. In the same place next year in a fiscal year that's even worse. So if there are ways that we can think about. Solving that issue, it would be very helpful as we look forward to it. Thanks, guys.
And Jess, I would just add to that, you know, the, the chapter seventy that we're talking about, that, that ten percent chapter seventy is a considerable amount of money. So. Depending on what numbers you look at and who you talk to, it's either six hundred and twenty thousand or it's five hundred and sixty one thousand. It's, it's a considerable amount of money. So that is money that is earmarked by the state for education that will go right to the town and could go right in a free cash. So. We understand the, the importance of free cash with the town, especially going out to bonding, hopefully, fingers crossed. With the Dale Street project soon. And we know that that's an important data point that they look at for you and they establish the bonding rates. So. We understand that that, that'll be helpful in that way as well. But I think as, as long as we. If we can come to an agreement that, you know, it makes sense to put on annual town meeting if, and it's a big if, right? If there are any outstanding bills. For the school department for FY twenty one, then it just makes sense and it's, it's good all around. So it is a considerable amount of money.
Pete, can I ask a question?
Sorry, yes, of course.
Just to Jess or Michael or Jeff, what is the, which number on this spreadsheet reflects the, the, the difference between. The amount you have funded from the grant and the CARES Act and what you see as the deficit for additional COVID spending? Is that the million ninety two?
So Mike, that the million, the one point nine, the million ninety two, that's the operational deficit, correct? That's on top of all the expenses that we have already. Processed through the one or two in the CARES Act. So that's on top of.
So then you're still gonna have the, even if you take the additional. Five sixty one or six twenty, you're still gonna have a four hundred thousand dollar shortage from what you're projecting to spend between January and June. And the unanticipated revenue that's coming in to the, to the schools. Is that right?
It wouldn't be that high if the money goes into the CARES Act for the teachers and TAs and that, you know, so if we were able to transfer. As Michael said, the September to the December into the CARES Act, it wouldn't be, the delta wouldn't be four hundred, it'd be smaller than that.
Okay. And what's the obstacle to transferring that into the CARES Act?
There is no obstacle.
Okay, so that sounds.
I mean, is there an actual possibility that FEMA will reject that expense as a reimbursable expense? That's been my concern.
Even if FEMA does, then it goes into CARES. So.
CARES will not reject it because you approved it.
Well, that's not exactly true. So what will happen is we will submit it. They will send us the money. Three to four years from now, there can be an audit done on CARES expenditures. If the Department of Revenue decides that any of those expenditures were not done appropriately. They will subtract that amount of money from your cherry sheet for that fiscal year.
So basically, we are getting a hamburger today, but we will pay them on Tuesday if this doesn't work. Correct. Okay.
That's why we've been sticklers for making sure any CARES expenditure that's been appropriated, we make sure we have. You know, an email backup invoices. So everything's categorized. So we have all of that ready for the audit whenever they do it.
Don't forget the description, Christine.
I have the description.
And a description of everything too.
I do. I don't know what some of it means.
Christine, a big picture question here. So the thing I don't see on this, this sheet is FEMA. And I'm trying to understand now that, in that it came up. And the other thing I don't see on the sheet is any plans for subsequent. CARES Act funding. So there's two, it seems like there's two big gaps here. One. If this is the full code, the first question, is this the full COVID cost for the schools, Mike?
See, this is what I'm, so yes, correct. This is what we're projecting the full cost will be.
And we're doing a conservative projection because we have seen prices go up and down, or actually mostly just up for many of our supplies.
When you put the school budget together for the town meeting in June. Did that school budget have any consideration of COVID costs in what you built?
No.
We didn't know what the state would require of us. We had no idea what any.
Requirements, yeah.
Well, and actually, that, that works to our benefit because the CARES Act is only eligible if it's an unbudgeted amount.
Okay, well, there's a good, okay, you answered that question. So then the, then the two gaps for me is out of what I see on this sheet. Are we submitting some of the school, I think we are. We're submitting the school cost to FEMA first. And then what doesn't get reimbursed is CARES.
Right. And I will tell you, of everything we've submitted to FEMA, they've only reimbursed the school six thousand six hundred and forty five dollars. And it's mostly for PPE costs and that has started to drop off. They have, FEMA has. Reimbursed the town seventy two thousand dollars through FEMA and most of that was for the additional expenditures we had in keeping the transfer station open as well as some additional work for police and fire.
So, so my only question is, when I look at these CARES Act numbers, is that CARES plus FEMA? As far as the funding numbers or is this only CARES, not, not FEMA?
This is not including, yeah.
So, so there's, even if it's, maybe it's only six thousand dollars, but so there's yet another source of. Of funding that's not reflected here, or not, not that it should be. There's another source of funding called FEMA. I think what you're saying is, yes, there is, but right now, based on experience, the FEMA reimbursements will be. Nominal. But then my question is, didn't you say? The FEMA reimburses seventy, I guess, I guess CARES will reimburse one hundred percent of stuff that FEMA doesn't reimburse at all. FEMA will reimburse seventy five percent of stuff that we submit to it that it reimburses. And then you can throw twenty five percent, the remaining twenty five percent into CARES.
Just to make it completely crystal clear.
Okay. And then in terms of this discussion here. What we're not talking about at all is any subsequent post January first. CARES Act like funding sources.
Right. Which is why we can't necessarily come to you with an exact number. But to really, I think what we're trying to do is make sure that we are being as transparent. Across the board right now and helping you understand. Where, where we are right now, because that's the only thing that we can show you, right? That's the only thing that we can project. We can't know what kind of funding. And quite frankly, when we put the spreadsheet together, we didn't actually know who would be president or what kind of administration we would have. So I think that we're trying to be as conservative and as open as possible about what some of our difficulties might be. And. Accepting that we would, we would be happy to accept any kind of grants or any other kind of. Reimbursement that would take care of some of this. But there is good reason to believe that we may have to come back to the town at the end of, at the town meeting. To say that this is, these are operational costs that we simply have not been able to cover with any.
Jess, what, what worries me about that, Jess, is that sounds to me like the town. Will be accountable for, for managing or covering the budget of the schools. So the, the piece that's missing for me here is. Who's accountable and does a commitment like that let this, you know, you're gonna come in a town meeting and here's the price and give it to us. And I know I'm not comfortable to pre-commit something and.
Well, neither are we.
Yeah, as Jeff, as Jeff pointed out, what's on my mind around the. The selectmen pulled money out of the reserves to try to decrease the sting in June. With the understanding if more funding came in, that that would, the money that we put in, that first money that. with the understanding if more funding came in, that that would, the money that we put in, that first money that comes in would go to replenish the reserves. The, the double reason aside from just fiscal policy that we have that I would care about that is I am very mindful of the fact that a year from now, the plan is to come to the town for a funding, you know, a bond, a bond article. And I'm very sensitive to the fact that we already are on probation with the funding agencies. So the issue of managing the interest rates is a big deal. So maybe, maybe I don't fully understand what we're being asked to commit to, or maybe we're just agreeing to something in principle here. But if I look at this, and in my math, I'm oversimplifying. If the remaining CARES Act for the town would allow 600,000, and I'm being slightly optimistic, so don't nickel and dime me, out of that million one, if 600,000 of it was covered under the CARES Act between now and December 30th. And if there was a subsequent CARES Act supplement that was equivalent to the total amount that we got already, your problem goes away.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, you know, we do want to think about the chapter 70 money is meant for for schools.
Yeah.
And, and, and I remember, but I do want to get this out. We were asked to do a 10% reduction based on the belief that our that we would be getting a 10% reduction in chapter 70 reimbursement. It was level funded. And of course, it's, you know, I think that Sharon and Jeff and Christine and all of us have really been talking about that these are town expenses, whether it's school in town or whatever, we really need to kind of stop splitting that because these are town services and we want to work together. And so we understand that chapter 70 money being in free cash is and not asking for all of it, or even any of it, if we don't end up having to use it. We understand that that makes the free cash look a lot better. It gives our town more flexibility. We're very grateful that this is something that we are able to do. I think more than asking you to simply agree or disagree is that we are, we are trying to present to you what our kind of worst case scenarios are right now. That we're working very hard with the warrant committee over the next several months to manage and to make sure that all of these expenses are projected outward, that there is no sense of whether we will be surprising anybody. And that obviously, as that, as the spring goes along, we will be working with the warrant committee to do our best to make sure that whatever article we may end up asking for is something that they agree with as well. So I think that we come you, to you today with a sense of transparency, of trying to present to you where we are and making sure that everybody in the town is coming along with us.
But.
No one's ever had.
I endorse that, Jess. I, I think we also need to have clarity around what our understandings are as well. So first off, if the chapter 70 funds, I'm not sure if we're just having a semantic issue here. And now I'm actually wondering whether that semantic issue matters. I totally agree that chapter 70 funds and all the time I've worked on town budgets, that goes to schools.
Right.
So the issue, that issue in terms of the schools, spending the chapter 70 funds that you get in total, to me is not an issue at all. The thing that changed is because you got those chapter 70 funds, the town's tax levy doesn't have to be tapped as much to cover the budget that was approved. So if there's a reason why it's important to recognize or to account for the chapter 70 funds, to me, that's administrative, but I just may not understand it. The, the understanding that I had on the board of selectmen at the time that we approved, basically turning our back on our own fiscal policies to release more money from the reserve funds was that we were doing that in order to basically try to keep you guys above water. But in the event more funds came back to the town, the first place that would be replenished was those reserve funds. That, and my, the basis of my approving that was I was informed that that was an agreement that we had. So to me, it's that piece of it, I'm not, I don't want to discount the problem you're facing. I get that. But the part of this around accounting, A, I think that schools do get all the chapter 70 funds. But the agreement was if more funding comes in, whether it was the schools or the towns, one of the first thing that would be replenished were the reserve funds.
All right. Maybe I would ask the, the rest of the selectmen and anybody else here to kind of weigh in on that a little bit, or have Jeff kind of talk about that. Because I think, I mean, I think that.
That was the basis of my, my vote of approval, but I would be curious to hear from the other two selectmen.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that's, this is why we're here because we want to make sure that everybody has an understanding of where we are. And also an understanding that, you know, we could not have known in any way, shape or form what the state would ask us to do without really giving us. It's almost like everybody decided that the pandemic was going to end by December 30th. And after that, you were kind of on your own. And unfortunately, that is what happens with Medfield a lot, you know?
And one, one other point about that, Jess, I mean, I've watched you, I've watched you guys on the school committee, the superintendent, you know, Mike, you, and I've at least indirectly heard about the schools this year. It's been, it's probably one of the few years when I've ever looked over at another group of people and said, man, have they got it worse than we do? Boy, it's nice. We, we kind of ducked that one. So none of my comments, my comments here aren't to kind of like go after propligate spending by any means.
No, no, no. I understand.
What I am, I am deeply worried about FY22 in terms of where the state is going to be on that. I am deeply worried about are the town's ability, assuming that there, we get approval for the school, the town's ability to actually be able to fund that in a way that doesn't cost us far more than it should. So where I'm coming from here is not only do we not know what the state wanted schools to do this year, I don't know what the town is going to be facing over the next year and a half. Other than I know there's some big demands that are coming in. And I sure would like to set it up in a way where we have a prayer of getting it pushed through. So.
Gus, you and I share some of the same concerns. I don't think anybody here disagrees with the idea that, you know, we are in a sea of uncertainty. At the same time, we're also in a sea of, you know, essentially things that we must spend on. And we do not see right now concretely in our hands or in numbers or on cherry sheets or anywhere else where that money may actually be made up. And I think that what we're trying to do is have kind of a long-term conversation. I am not, you know, I don't think any of us are asking you to commit to a dollar amount in any way, shape or form. And knowing Jeff and Michael as I do, they are tremendously conservative with their facts and their figures and their budgeting. We don't want anyone to be surprised. So we come to you tonight, not so much demanding that this happened for us, but saying we need to work together to make this happen. Because I, I also have to say, would venture to say that there is probably not a taxpayer in this town who would say, I'm not interested in paying an additional $20 a year so we can keep kids in school and safe. You know, like if, if this $500,000 at this point that we could go over would make or break our town or our, you know, it's, that's saying a lot more than that we simply need to really think about what our priorities are here. And we can't, we can't simply shut down schools or cut more or any of these things. We would never have expected any of this. And we believe that there will be additional funding. But if there is not, if we hit the worst case scenario, and, and I have to say, I'm continually amazed by what the bottom is of the worst case scenario. Every day it seems to kind of reset its limit. But if there was a worst case scenario, this would probably be the figure that we would come to you with. We expect that there could be some help out there. We want it. But we don't, we want to present you our own version of the doom and gloom. So that you know what could conceivably come. And we will continue to work with the warrant committee and work on our own to figure out how we can make this work better so that it is not so expensive. But we also want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. And not necessarily agreeing, but just on the same page.
Well, Mike, do you want to weigh in on this then at this point?
Yeah, sure. Christine, because the, the UGGA was also level funded, right? The unrestricted local aid.
Correct.
And, and where are we on the other local receipts? Because obviously when we, we adopt our budgets at town meeting, we are using an estimate of non-property tax revenue. There's no guarantee that that non-property tax revenue is going to come in as projected. This is a circumstance where at least the state aid is coming in higher than we projected. So what's the dollar amount on the, on the, the 10% bump of the?
So the 10% total of what is an additional revenue that we didn't account for at town meeting is 688,409.
Okay.
Five sixty-one of that is chapter 70. 115, 138 is unrestricted government aid, and the rest is assigned to Veterans Benefits Council on Aging and have a dedicated thing. Just, I know we have a lot of people watching tonight. So one of the things that might be helpful because they don't usually see this breakdown at town meeting between chapter 70 and UGA is that we carry this on the budget as just state aid, as a revenue source on the budget. So if anybody's flipping back to the budget book, because I know you all keep them, in the budget book, it will have just a state aid number. We don't actually divide it out when we're looking at the budget at town meeting. So just for anybody who has some questions on that. We are concerned about our local receipts. You know, especially with the governor's new guidance about our restaurants having to close earlier. No tents allowed after December 1st now through April. We, we are concerned about where we're going to be on our locals meal, on our local meals tax. So that is still an outstanding concern.
Christine, can you remind me what the local meals tax brings in in a, in a regular year?
In a, in a regular year, actually Nick can probably bring it up, in a regular year.
A hundred and thirty years, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah. In a, in a quarter, we can bring in, I think our best quarter we had close to 40,000, I want to say 38 maybe. And we're down less than half of that in the last quarter. So.
Okay.
There are some concerns. We also had some issues in, we extended the property tax deadline. So in giving, in giving that reprieve, we lost close to $80,000 in demand and late fees that we count on as a local receipt as well. So all of the, all of the decisions we've made to benefit our taxpayers and our businesses are having an impact on our local receipts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would, I would agree with Gus. I mean, obviously the chapter 70 money goes to the schools sort of as a matter of course. That's not really a question. And the issue is, is sort of what to do with the extra tax revenue that's, you know, potentially coming to the town as a result of, of the greater infusion of, of chapter 70 money into the, into the town's budget. And I agree with Jess, and I do think it is a town priority to get our kids into school as much as possible. And we should not be getting into a situation where for budgetary reasons, where the money is available, the money is available and the amount of taxes that the, the town meeting had appropriated to. The town meeting voted for this level of taxation and we set, we set the tax rate at that level. We shouldn't be in a position where we're saying, gee, you have to cut back or reduce it all the amount of time that the kids are in school. And so, and that is, that should be a town goal and town objective and town priority. So I agree with you on that front. Obviously, you know, an agreement with us on this kind of issue is somewhat academic. And I think the original thought of this meeting was to ask us to call it a special town meeting now, which obviously we had discussed that in September. And I think from our perspective, that, that issue, that ship had sailed. You know, we're not going to call a special town meeting, I don't think, for December 2nd at noon or something like that, particularly given all the additional restrictions. And so and given that, that we sort of, that, that window was missed to, to try to do that in orderly fashion. You know, I, I have no objection at all to what you're proposing, that I think we ought to go ahead and hope, maybe more than hope, have some expectation that there will be an additional influx of money from some government entity with the ability to borrow that we don't have. That'll get us through June, but that in the event that doesn't come to pass, I certainly would be supportive of supporting the warrant committee's recommendation with respect to whatever spending for fiscal year 21, you're undertaking above or beyond what was appropriated and approved at last year's town meeting. Because I, I don't want to be in a situation where you think you can't have the employees or have the teachers that you think you need to, to operate the school and to try to get the kids to school as much as possible and get as much out of the year as they can. So I, I have no objection to that. In theory, I think I would agree with Gus. It's not an agreement to whatever number that gets thrown up there. I think you know, the level of scrutiny that will get applied to those expenditures will be the same level of scrutiny that gets applied to everybody's expenditures in a given year. And obviously, the appropriating body is the town meeting. So it's hopefully up to the town meeting to decide in May whether to go ahead with this. But I, I don't, you know, I, I think that I'm in agreement with you and with Gus that we ought to proceed, assuming the warrant committee, you know, is of a similar mind on this. Although I would like to hear from the warrant committee as well to get their perspective on this approach. But I think in theory, you know, we did, we did work very hard in the budget last year to give the schools, you know, whatever it is, a 1% increase. You know, even when we were anticipating a pretty steep cut, not only in, in our, our state aid, but also our local receipts and other sources of revenue, some of which had been made up and some of which happened. So I think it's still an open question between now and June, what those numbers are going to look like, what's going to happen to that money in the interim, if, if, as those estimates continue to become reality.
Yeah. This does rather grind, doesn't it? After a while, this pandemic stuff, it's like you're always kind of trying to figure out the next thing that is going to happen. And so I think that it is important for us to be as communicating, not only just with, within the town hall, but also communicating with the town and having these meetings to make sure that everybody has the same level of expectation and that we are pursuing the, the most conservative approach that we possibly can while making sure that we keep kids in school.
And I think this does underscore the importance that not everyone has agreed with of what we've been trying to accomplish over the last few years in terms of our reserves and long-term capital spending priorities. And obviously, if we had adopted that policy 10 years ago, we'd have a lot more in reserves right now and be in a much better position to make this up without having to, to have this kind of a discussion. And that's water under the bridge. It's more of a message to our successors not to forget the fact that as much as it is nice to spend on things we're going to use immediately this year, that actually paying attention to longer-term expenses and reserves is part of, of a prudent fiscal approach. And it's not sort of a fake made up thing that people just sort of cooked up on their own. So I think it's, it's too bad we didn't get at this five years earlier, but I think it's going to be important when we do pull out of this that we not forget about it and don't go forward thinking, well, now that, you know, we're out of the pandemic, we can just start spending again on stuff that we can use right away. So off the soapbox, but that's just a footnote for the future since this is being taped and I'm sure you all take that message to heart.
We're going to show it to future selectmen on Christmas Eve, something like, you know, the ghosts from Christmas past, selectmen past.
So if I can just take a minute, I just want to lay out the process. I know that Jess has mentioned transparency a couple of times. I want to make sure everybody's clear on the process of how this works. So if we're not going forward with a special town meeting and we're going to do an article at the annual, then what we need to do is have this decision made before the governor signs the budget. So we have moved the tax reclassification hearing from the first week of December to next Tuesday, be on November 17. That will allow us to use the local aid numbers, the state aid numbers that we used at town meeting, which will. which will then allow that money, the additional revenue, the 688, to go to free cash at the end of the year. We have the Department of Revenue, we've been working very closely with them on getting approval for this option. But just a caveat, if the governor signs the budget tomorrow, this option is no longer on the table and we'll have to think of a Plan C at this point. But I've talked to our delegation and they've assured me that if.
Is tomorrow a Friday? Because it seems like he only drops bombs on Fridays.
Well, I've talked to our delegation and they have assured me they will trip him if he goes to sign the budget before we've had our tax reclassification hearing. So we feel comfortable in having it next Tuesday. He's not set to sign the budget till the week of Thanksgiving. But I just want everybody to be clear that if he signs that earlier, we have, you know, we'll be back here having another large meeting like this again.
Hey Christine, can I say that in plain English for people that are tuning into this meeting? Because there's a piece of this that I, I think we're doing the right thing. But I want people to understand what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. The budget that was passed in June was based on a certain set of assumptions. And based on that, there was an expected tax levy that people would be expected to pay. If we don't do this tax reclassification hearing prior to the budget being signed, we would not be able to recognize the higher state aid. And what would effectively, but we would get it. And so because we couldn't recognize it, the required tax levy would have dropped by the amount of the increase in the state aid. As a result of that, this is the part I want the public to understand, but I also want them to understand why they're not going to get it. They would have seen a windfall in their taxes from what would otherwise have been the case. They would, they would wind up spending or paying a little bit less in this year's taxes than they already had indicated they were willing to pay in June. And what we're doing here is by being able to adjust for that higher, higher state aid, basically, the total budget increases by, the total revenues to the town increases by that, even though the budget stays the same. And that will in turn lead to an increased amount of money dropping to the bottom line in free cash at the, at the, at the end of the fiscal year. The reason, it took me a good hour to figure out how this thing all worked. And I think something like this, the people outside, people in town should know what it is we're doing, why we're doing it. They've already agreed to pay the amount of money they're going to wind up having to pay. But this maneuver of having the tax classification early is a means for us to actually capture that as money that would drop to the bottom, drop to free cash as opposed to having it all just disappear and then we still have that reserve fund issue. I get that about right?
About right. But just to clarify, because I know you use the word windfall, I just want to put a dollar amount to that. On an average, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home in Medfield, it would be a one-time, a hundred and thirty-five dollar savings for this year.
I was, I was stuck in the number. I wasn't sure. Much? What are you guys doing? All right.
So I would join my colleagues in saying that this is the way that we should be doing it, that the chapter seventy money clearly is school money. We were in very unprecedented times and we just need to work together and figure out how to, how to deal with these budget problems. We certainly want to keep our eye on the, on the bond rating. That's very important. So the reserves are important as well. But I think we'll just need to reconvene at the, in the spring.
Yeah, and I think if we do get additional funding to cover these costs, then that, this money we're talking about will go to our reserves and to improving our bond rating. So there will be a benefit to taxpayers either way. This is not going to be spent on, you know, new sailboats for the selectmen or something like that.
Suggest that we campaign for these, whatever grants may come to us in the future, that they are student and school-specific and town-specific and not given to the state to disperse. Simply because quite frequently, when the state kind of decides who gets money, Medfield, because of our kind of tax, because of our income level, doesn't always get that. And if you would like to do something concrete, let's campaign to make sure that some of those dollars come student-specific and town-specific and not, and spread across the Commonwealth and across the country as opposed to coming in big blocks to the state. Because I think that frequently, we have financial issues here that are not necessarily reflected in what our median tax, our median income is, you know, because we don't have the commercial income. And nobody really accounts for not having commercial income within your, within your town.
Well, and we're also not taxed on our median income, right? We're not taxed on, I mean, they look at the median income as your ability to pay taxes. But because most of, ninety-four percent of our revenue comes from property taxes, which is, is indifferent to how much you're making in a particular year, that burden falls, you know, unequally on people.
So that was my little political plug there, not political so much as legislative.
Jess, do you have anything else for the selectmen tonight, or are we set?
Well, I think, I think the warrant committee is done, so the warrant committee can adjourn their meeting. Sharon.
But we'll be sticking around, Pete, for the Dale Street.
All right, thank you. You have an interest in that, okay.
You know, secondary.
Do we need to officially adjourn then?
If you could, please, thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the warrant committee?
So moves.
Is there a second? Okay, Jeremy? Amanda?
Yes.
Sorry, Ed?
Yes.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And I know Newton's here somewhere, I'm not seeing him. There you are. And Sharon, yes, so the warrant committee is adjourned.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
All right, let us just.
So the next part of the meeting is Mike Quinlan and Dale Street School Building Committee to discuss the Dale Street School Building Project Site Selection and to request Board of Selectmen approve site selection.
I'm here.
Thanks for coming, Mike.
No problem.
Did, did you have any presentation for us tonight, or?
No, the, I had reached out to the selectmen, but it sounded like everybody had the information they needed. I'm here to answer any questions and I certainly have some backup materials if I need to refer back to things.
Okay. Mike and Gus, do you have any questions that you want to raise with the school building committee at this point? Gus, maybe you want to go first? Yeah, please.
I, no, I don't. I've spent a good amount of time looking at this, at the information, debating the information, listening to people's ideas and listening in on the two public meetings that the building committee held between the, the meeting we had where we deferred our vote and tonight. The, I guess the one point I'll make is it was clear to me in talking with people that there, there are many people that have a marked preference for the Dale Street location. And the reasons that they have that, I think, has a lot to do with what Dale Street School is, what it's been. Some have had kids that have gone through the school, some have chosen to move where they moved into that part of town so their kids could walk to school. Interestingly, some of the people that live down near the Wheelock area that came out in favor of Wheelock cited that same advantage, my kids can walk to school. So there's, there's a lot of reasons. I did not personally view this as a easy answer in terms of one was a clear superior choice over the other. I put out the, my own view about the pros and cons of each. And I think anybody that paid attention to that would have seen where my thinking was going around the choice itself. But I did not come to my own conclusion about this easily because some of the arguments that people made in favor, have voted yet, but some of the arguments people made in favor of the Dale Street site actually resonated with me as somebody who used to be able to walk to school and I was going to school and lived in a system that had, oddly enough, lived in a system that had consolidated grades, but had neighborhood school. So there was more than one elementary school. So there was no way, everybody was going to be happy for anybody who sent me a message, if you sent it to me afternoon time on Sunday, I am through the message. I've been working since Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and today to try to respond to every message that's come in. I'm at about noon time on Sunday. So I, I won't, I'll continue to work those off, but it'll be after this vote has taken place.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm in a similar, a similar boat. I got through some more of my emails, Gus. We probably have an equal number. A lot of them came to all of us and I was not able to get back to everybody and substantively, as substantively as I would have liked to and for people who still want to hear from me substantively hereafter, I'm happy to do it. I do think that, you know, because I spent a lot of time reading these messages and kind of reading, over the past couple of weeks, trying to read back through everything, you know, kind of almost like from a lawyer's perspective, like you might do before trial, you kind of go back through all your exhibits and go back through everything else and you kind of look through it. And so I wanted to kind of, you know, step back a little bit from having participated in this process heavily and, you know, try to look at it again, sort of fresh from so you can never totally separate what you know from the analysis you're doing, but try to look at it kind of in light of everything that, that people were saying and taking into account the different perspectives of the people who are communicating with us. And I think, Gus, I do agree in looking back at your pros and cons, I very much appreciate it. You're doing that because I thought it was a pretty good outline. And I do think, you know, I think the two big messages that I got, particularly out of a lot of the more recent communications, which actually changed a little bit the way I'm thinking about it, is that I think the biggest pro sort of for the Dale Street location is the location itself, like the proximity to downtown. People who like where it's been, like that closeness to the downtown area for people who live in that neighborhood who are used to it. And, you know, I do think when you're going to make a change, you know, kind of like Chester and Spence, you know, the burden is sort of on the change, right? You sort of have the, if everything is equal, you don't, don't make the change. And so I think that, that was sort of one major factor. And that's sort of a factor, kind of irrespective of the size of school that you build. And I think a lot of people, some people who were articulating the preference for that location, which I think is a pro. I think if you look at the two of them together, you know, I remain of the view that nine, 10, and 11-year-olds can walk a mile on sidewalks. I think that is a true statement for most nine, 10, and 11-year-olds. But there's obviously some parents who will let their kids walk and some who won't. And that's just kind of, that would be a change moving over to Wheelock. But obviously, I think there is a desire for that, that proximity. Whether that, you know, that pro outweighs the benefits, the Wheelock site, I don't think, I don't think that necessarily does, but I think that that is, you know, a real sentiment and it's not just sentimentality. I think it's a real factor and people appreciate that aspect of the school for good reasons. You know, it's not simply like, well, this has always been painted yellow and like it being painted yellow and I don't want it to change. You know, so father, so-and-so always did it that way, why do you have to change? I think there are real community reasons behind it. And I think that was, I think I always recognized that, but I think that certainly has been underscored. I think the second part of it, I would say a majority of the communications focused a lot on cost. And, you know, Mike, I don't know if, at some point you want to put, put up sort of the, the cost slides of where we are. But I think the message that I got on cost from everything I heard is that people were not really worried about cost sort of in the delta between the two options we're talking about, right? I mean, the, the two options we're talking about, that I think if you were to choose between Wheelock and Dale, we're really choosing between G1 and B1. I think, I have not really seen a strong case made for demolishing the existing Dale Street School and building a new building on the, effectively on the baseball field, right? That, that would be a slightly cheaper option to Wheelock. But I haven't seen much case made for that. I've really seen repeatedly in the message, sort of, they want to renovate the existing building, you know, maintain the existing building. It was part of that preference for kind of the existing, the existing setup. And so when you're looking at, at the difference in cost between Wheelock, even if you were to sort of put every thumb on the scale in favor of making the Dale Street site seem cheaper and say, we're going to do all of the add-ons at Wheelock, or about a pinchel, four and a half million or more or so, and none of the add-ons at Dale, which would be another two million or so. You're still talking about a $5 million difference. And I think the sentiments that were expressed, you know, about cost in the communications, I don't think they were in that narrow gap. I don't think people, when they were talking about their concerns about their ability to stay in town, their concerns about seniors' ability to stay, are talking about the difference between really a $50 difference on, you know, your average house. I mean, it's a, it's a much bigger impact than that. And, and that kind of led me to believe that, you know, I think one of the concerns that's been expressed, one of the things you always have to think about in this process is when you get through it, you know, are you going to be able to get a two-thirds vote at town meeting for for the project? And I think so many of, of the communications I got were really concerned about kind of the, the top-line cost, more so than the relatively modest difference between the two options that, you know, my, again, to the extent that that is representative or the extent we're being asked to think of that as representative, I actually think if, if town meeting were to decide not to go ahead with, with what we recommend, I don't think we'd be, you know, if we recommend the Wheelock site, I don't think we'd be going back to B1. I think we'd be going back to, you know, either, you know, the base repair option, which I still think is an awful lot of money to put into a very old building for no great improvement. Or we'd be going back to some sort of shorter-term kind of stopgap with the building, which again, which would have its own issues, because that would then be a really major savings. If you were to compare it to the cost of a new building or the cost of the added, additional renovated building, was a big, is a big difference if you did just, for example, the, the capital expenses that were the capital expenses that were kind of earmarked for Dale Street in the, in the capital building plan. And so, you know, that's kind of what I, what I took out of the more recent set of communications is that I was kind of of the mode thinking, well, pretty much everybody's in agreement that we're going to spend, you know, between 55 or between 59 and 64 million dollars on a new school, but maybe not, right? Maybe the, the preference for Dale overlaps very heavily with a desire to spend much, much less than we would in any MSBA project, right? And I wanted to address a little bit as well, because I got some emails pointing out kind of the, the drop in enrollment this year and how that ought to factor into what we're thinking about, you know? And since I have, have been open from the outset of this process, that I'm, I'm a skeptic of the enrollment projections that the MSBA has independently decided are the proper enrollment projections and the enrollment projections that we had to agree to as part of the MSBA process, in which we asked the MSBA to reconsider. And they said, no, that they still think the projections they're requiring us to use are correct. And as I said, I'm a skeptic, but I'm not a convinced skeptic in the sense that I'm certainly not going to say that they're definitely wrong or that they're definitely going to be wrong throughout the entire 75-year history or however long this building lasts. So I'm a skeptic sort of within the window we're talking about. And I've been pretty consistent on that. I think, you know, school enrollment projections, you know, it's, it's a little bit, they're used in some circumstances to support whichever, you know, whatever argument you're making. So when you're at a meeting on a affordable housing project, a person will stand up and insist that the school enrollment is going to explode and we can't possibly do this housing project because of exploding enrollment. But then we're going to talk about the school and say, well, no, we can't build a school the size, the enrollment's never going to happen. And obviously, enrollment is an uncertainty. It's something we don't control. And, you know, even in the, the, at the maximum level of additional development that we do, that additional development would not be a huge driver of school enrollment. The big driver of school enrollment will be how many kids are in our existing houses. So I've tried to think about this, as I have as well from the outset, sort of long-term. And, you know, what happens under any number of different scenarios? And that's where I think sort of the Wheelock site is still stronger, because just from a site standpoint, it is bigger. And if we're going to have two sites where. just from a site standpoint, it is bigger. And if we're going to have two sites where you have two thirds, uh, you got one site's going to have two thirds of the students and the other side's going to have one third of the students. It does make sense to me that you'd have more students at the larger site. Uh, because if we're going to be in the MSBA process, we have to build to this higher enrollment projection, we're going to be building a much larger school, uh, than we've had before. And so the footprint of any school on the Dale Street site, which has to accommodate the same number of kids as a school on the Wheelock site, is going to be much bigger than what's there right now. It's going to pick up more of that property. Um, I think, you know, as I've said again, and this has been a hobby horse of mine, and I think I'm a, you know, a, a committee of one or a party of one on this issue, but I do think if our enrollment kind of continues where it's going and, and we have to build a school of the size, we, as we think long-term, we should really be thinking about whether we want to commit ourselves to having three elementary schools or whether we could have a larger savings in our capital by consolidating from three to two at one point. Um, I don't think we would consolidate from three to two if both of them were on the Dale Street site. So I've kind of, in thinking about this, I do think if we build at Dale Street, we are committing to staying with three elementary schools, which means doing something with the Wheelock School within the next 10 to 20 years, or, you know, Mike Quinlan thinks 20 years. Maybe that's right. Either way, it's still going to be within the bonding period of this building. I also find it very hard to believe that we'll be able to fit a park and rec building, on the, the Dale Street location, if we do build the Dale Street School there. Because, um, that just becomes a very congested site with three pretty big buildings on there. And, and it'd be a challenging spot for all three of those. I think as Leo Brim has pointed out, uh, with respect to the location of the school, you know, because we bus to the school, the school is, is more accessible to more people. Whereas for the parks and rec, we don't bu- bust the parks and rec. And so as between the two, um, you might make the parks and rec more accessible. I don't know where it would go, um, but it probably would not go in the center of town if it's not able to go on Dale Street. I, a number of people also raised this issue of what do we do with Dale Street after this happens? And I, I appreciate the lack of certainty on that is, is a negative. I, I see the flexibility though as more of a positive because, you know, we, we there's something of an assumption in some of the analysis that we're going to go ahead and do a parks and rec building right after this one. I, I'm not sure about that. I mean, frankly, um, you know, given the, the cost of this building, um, given the concerns that a lot of people have, uh, about taxes, which I do too. You know, I just don't know if that's going to follow immediately on this. Um, you know, the FAFF Center is, is older than any of these other buildings. If something were to happen, I don't think we would, uh, we would put a lot of more money into it. Um, I mean, Christine can disagree with me or, or Amy or, but I, or Mel, but I, I don't think we would. And so the concern I have is if we, we get to the other side of the school and if we've built it at Dale Street, um, and then the FAFF Center just sort of has to be shut, that we'll be confronted with either having no space for parks and rec or having to build a, a new parks and rec building. Whereas I think if we were to build the school at Wheelock, um, even without a renovation, you could move, um, parks and rec into the Dale Street building for some period of time and on an interim basis, um, without a huge additional investment and, and just keeping it, it safe and open. So I think the, the greater flexibility over time is an advantage from a capital planning standpoint and thinking about all of these buildings. And so I think that, that's kind of the, the way I've looked at it here. I, I think that, that, um, you know, I, I think if, if the town were, were at the town meeting, were to decide not to go ahead and, and, you know, put it go to stay at Dale Street, I wouldn't, as I said it before, I wouldn't be blocking the bulldozers on the way in. You know, I do think that we, we make more decisions for the future of the town by staying where we are, uh, than moving to Wheelock. I think we give the future people, people of the town more options and more options that can reduce kind of the overall cost of our, of our capital. And with respect to traffic, that's one last point. And obviously it would be a change in traffic flow. And I'm always a little bit, I think we always should be a little bit low to necessarily predict exactly what's going to happen with traffic because it is dynamic. And as I think Kevin Stoddard pointed out, at one of the meetings, um, you know, the, the traffic flow kind of in the Dale Street, North Street area is not necessarily going to be constant either, because so much of the additional development, both planned and recent in town has come on that part of town. And so, you know, the status quo, whatever that is over there is not what's going to, not what's going to, going to maintain. So that's, I apologize for the long-winded um, discussion here, but I did kind of want to go through what I'd been thinking about and kind of what people had raised and how I thought about it because um, people did raise, do raise some very good, very good points. And, and I do think that, you know, if, if we, um, move ahead with the recommendation of the school building committee, you know, I guess that obviously no one wants to have an unsuccessful vote at town meeting, but I, I think my thinking on that has changed a little bit because I'm not sure that we necessarily would be staying in the MSBA program if there was an unsuccessful vote, because I think the expression of such an unsuccessful vote might be more towards doing something on our own and much narrower than a replacement of this building. That's obviously down the road. Um, but I think if we're going to stay in the MSBA process and build a school of the size, um, and I might think differently if, if the school is going to be smaller, but a school of this size, we're better off having it at the Dale Street location. So again, sorry for dominating the floor there, but I did just want to go through my, my more recent thought process on this.
Thank you, Mike. My thought process has basically stayed the same since back in September, when we heard from the school building committee. And the things that jumped out at me from their presentation back then were that the Dale Street site was just too small to con- uh, and that if we put a a new building there to try to save a little bit of money, um, over the Wheelock site, that, uh, that it would just be, uh, too congested. I'm looking at my notes of that September 16 meeting. Jeff Marsden said too congested. Tim Bonfetti said Dale Street, uh, site is too tight. Site is too small to do it right. The, uh, a new school just doesn't fit. The ad reno is just too uncertain. Walter Kincaid pointed to the educational goals as being foremost opportunity to improve the existing Wheelock, because we're going to improve the site, the site planned for around the school there. Tom Irb mentioned that he wouldn't put his kids, wouldn't want to put the kids through the, uh, uh, construction and reno of the Dale Street. Mike Weber talked about the Dale, uh, ad reno could be great, but as someone in con- construction, it's just not practical. And, and he too said the site was too tight. Leo Brim also talked about the site being too tight. So I, you know, if the people that, that I've asked to look into this for the town, come back and tell me that, that the site is, uh, at Dale Street is too si- too tight to get a, a good product there. That was foremost in my thinking. Secondary in my thinking was the educational benefits. Uh, Mike, Jeff Marsden told us that, that we're going to share some staff and that, uh, there's some educational benefits from having, uh, the new elementary school next to the Wheelock School. And I may, uh, Shay, O'Shea Brook, uh, seconded that idea as well, uh, as did a number of the other people on the, on the committee. And so the foremost for me was the, the thought that the, the ultimate cost of the two buildings is not that dissimilar. There, there clearly are, are lots of people in town that don't want to pay the extra $1,000 a year of taxes. None, none of us are, are happy to be paying that extra tax money, but the, the reality is that the Dale Street School has to get fixed, has to, something has to be done. And, uh, we, so we really don't have a choice. And the choice is, is between the, we have a bunch of Hobson's choices here, all of which are, um, tens of millions of dollars. And so that for me to, to spend tens of millions of dollars and get a, a compromised product, uh, uh, jammed in at the existing Dale Street site, which site I happen to like better myself, but, um, I just don't think it works there. So I think that we have to, for me, I, I, I see that it has to, in my mind, has, should go to Wheelock. And that of course creates all kinds of problems for that neighborhood that, uh, that the school building committee will have to try to figure out. And the town, I guess, as a town, we need to figure out how to, how to deal with the traffic down there. So. Do we want to, uh, take a vote on terms of, uh, are we ready to have a vote?
I am.
I guess we wanted to, we're going to have some public input. So we want to do that first, certainly. If people want to have some say or some ask questions.
If anyone would like to speak, just please put it in the Q and A that you'd like to talk to the selectman live.
Well, we're waiting for people to weigh in. I, I would make one other just broad comment. Pete, I think it builds on a point you just made. That, you know, when, when it's a selectman, when you form a committee, particularly a committee that you're asked to take on a complex problem, uh, and you make, you bring people in that have the technical expertise to give you a prayer that they'll come up with a good solution. A, a lot of, a lot of the arguments that I've seen were people making technical arguments about the right answer. And when those arguments are being made to me as a selectman, the circumstances under which I would be comfortable not listening to the recommendation of the committee that we put in place to come up with this recommendation. Uh, they have to be, for me at least, they have to be extreme. I either think, they have to think they've just screwed it up so bad that it's obvious even to somebody like me that they made a mistake or it's a process issue. Uh, and I think the deferral we had in our vote from last week, it was a process issue that we, it was fixable. Uh, but just in terms of, you know, backdrop on the decisions, it's, it's hard. I think it's, it ought to be hard for the selectmen. We wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want a standard that you form committees and those committees go off and come up with answers. And if the answers happen to be the answer, they match the answer you had in your hip pocket to start with, then you're going to accept the recommendation. And if it doesn't, you won't. So it's, it's a difficult thing on my, for my part at least, to make a decision to deliberately right reject a recommendation of a committee that I'm comfortable is staff with people who have competence, have gone, that they've gone through a process that uh, is, you know, technically valid. Uh, and, uh, as I said, also that they make sure that the public has a chance to weigh in.
And, and they, that committee has gone through the process and in a lot more detail than the select board has, except for Mike Markucci, because of his being on that committee. But, uh, I mean, you, you have to give some credence to the depth in, with which they've looked at the, uh, the questions that they've been asked to deal with.
Uh, first speaker is Jerry Potts.
Hi Jerry, thanks for coming.
Always the excitement of unmuting.
You're unmuted. We can hear you. We can't see you.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm better not seeing with the face. We'll go with the, we'll go with the voice. So, um, thanks for taking, I, you know, I, I think one of the triggers for me has been just seeing the student enrollment coming in 109 students lower than the projections and in looking at the original projections of how, you know, 800 new students and these huge buildings, we're, we're not anywhere close. We're actually going in the opposite direction. So with that, knowing now that we have not only a surge of students, but we look at surrounding communities that are watching similar projections of enrollment that are dropping and we have 109 fewer than was estimated. We run the risk of building a huge building, number one, that we don't need. But number two, one of the assumptions was that we would need to build modulators to handle any construction would take place at Dale. And if you look at the capacity at Wheelock right now in the middle school, they're both well under the maximum capacity they've been at. And so you could consider putting one or two modulators off of middle school and, and Wheelock and use most of the facilities there to have the rising third graders stay at Wheelock and the rising fourth graders go to the middle school for one year. And then you have Dale Street available to do, uh, new construction or an ad reno at a much cheaper cost than what's being projected, because the modulators and the delays, because you'd have to work around students, wouldn't exist. You, you have capacity right now that's not being used at, at two of our schools. Um, and enrollment numbers overall, you know, are lower in those grades. So, uh, you know, this is the kind of discussion that when the SBC voted to move this ahead and things like the Wheelock Forum and more information and questions that came up, w- we're just getting, continually getting information like the enrollment that would have been really important, I think, to have before the SBC had a vote. I also think there's a lot.
Can I respond to that though, Jerry?
Sure.
Since, since this is sort of a hobby horse of mine and, and I get your point, right? And look, the, the, I guess I said, as, as a skeptic of this for a long time, it doesn't surprise me. But I don't know, also don't know that, that we ought to overreact to one year's worth of, of information in this. And obviously there are a number of kids who probably would otherwise be in school, who are in, uh, private school or who in, who are being homeschooled. I think we all know families in that situation, um, who, who opted, uh, to go someplace else for the year. And I think, you know, just three years ago, um, using a similar kind of independent enrollment projection service, they undershot the mark by a hundred. Um, you know, and it was the great class size panic of 2017, um, that ultimately led to, to Leo being elected to the school committee. And so I think, I mean, I, I think my skepticism about enrollment is a longer term issue, but I don't know that we ought to look at one year's worth of data and say, well, we should rejigger the plans and the estimates, because it's just as possible that if things snapped back, you'll overshoot the mark, because I think.
Mike, I, I wasn't suggesting to change the size of the building, that, that, that probably.
No, even changing the estimate though, Jerry, even if you change the estimate and say, oh, it's going to be cheaper.
No, 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 Mike.
Modulators.
My, 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 my point is that we're, if we pass this and we do the construction, we're looking a year out. And we're not going to get, you know, 250 students coming in. We're 109, well, if we are, then there would be one of the largest increases in the history of the school district. So we're down 109 from projections and, and and I'm just talking about the, the, you don't have the need to build an army of, you know, a huge, um, trailer park of modulators to handle. And one of the largest costs in building at Dale was the disruption to the students there of either building modulators and taking all the fields or having to build them somewhere else. And what I'm saying is if you end up using the middle school and Wheelock for a short period of time, one year, you're in real school buildings with cafeterias and facilities, you build smaller modulators. And when you do that, you get the $3 million from, from, uh, MSBA that you don't get if, if you go to Wheelock, right? We get $3 million more for renovating Dale and you're not disrupting the students. They're not going through construction. You have basically wide open spot to be able to do that. And it's more just the discussion around these things. I just think the SBC voted on it before we could have those discussions. So really all the sessions since then, and I, I have to be honest, I've heard from people who have done outreach to you Pete and others who said, basically it's a done deal. And, and so why are we having these forums in the last few weeks if it's exactly what we thought? It was just kind of window dressing. So I, I think there are a number of people who are agitated about it. It's not a small group. It's not a fringe. It's not people copying a letter. There are a couple hundred people who are very agitated, who want it there, not because, you know, uh, they, they want it there because they think it's a far better place for the town. And I understand SBC doesn't feel that, but it does feel like this voice, these voices have sort of been ignored and have been told.
I guess Jerry, though, let me ask you a question. Other than agreeing with you substantively, which people don't, I mean, I, I don't know what else you're supposed to do in considering the arguments. I mean, do you agree that it's possible to have someone listen to you, understand your arguments and just disagree with them?
A hu- 100%, but I also think that when more than a couple hundred people in a vote where you need two thirds, the public voice, not just me, Mike, it's, it's a lot of people. And I, 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 I think even going back to the forums, it's been overwhelmingly people who wanted a Dale who have spoke up. You get one or two people who wanted a Wheelock and you get a lot of people who are Wheelock who don't want it there and a Dale Street who want it. And even Gus, you said this at the last Board of Selectmen meeting on this topic. You've never heard from so many people who actually want a construction building and it's closer to the downtown. It, I mean, and all of those arguments just keep getting ignored. You know, we have a master.
But they're not ignored, Jerry. That's the thing. You're, you're making it sound like we're pretending we, we didn't hear those arguments. I mean, I think.
They've been dismissed. So, you know, it's not that far away.
They've been disagreed with as a dispositive factor. That's different.
There are a lot of voices that felt they haven't been listened to on it. And, and again, it's not because, again, it's democracy and we love it and whatever the vote ends up being, totally understand it, but we don't have an opportunity to voice these things. You know, if we do it after the fact, people complain, we're doing it aggressively before the votes to try to be listened to. And it just felt like the SBC voted on this before there was enough public dialogue and information. And when we raised that, we were saying there were 44 meetings that took place. Yeah, but there was no proposal being made. The proposals were made in September. That was the final time. We, we kept before that being told, don't make comments until you see the whole plan. And then we see the whole plan and it's like, oh, yeah, we're going to vote on it. So I, I, and let me say one more time, the people on that committee. The people on that committee I have a ton of respect for. Even Mike Quinlan, who thinks I can't stand him, Mike, the number of times you have put up with all of this. We don't always agree and I'm very passionate about arguing it, but I know you care about the town and I know you want to do the right thing. So I don't think there's some nefarious plan here to undermine Western democracy run by the Russian bots, right? So I, I, I really don't, Mike. You, you, you don't seem like a Russian agent to me. But I, I think there are people very passionate, not just myself and Chris. There are a lot of people who are passionate and you know, I, I just, when we talked about the, the large plurality who was in favor of Dale at Dale, it was like, well, they didn't have all the information. I think a majority of people prefer it there and we all prefer it at school. So maybe we're going to vote at a Wheelock, but I think it's going to create a lot of pain in the town. But I appreciate-
Or not, Jerry. People, people may vote no, right? And that's, that's always an option.
I'd hate that. I, I want a school. I, I want something to pass. And you'd get overwhelmed, you'd get 90% support if it's at Dale. But I mostly appreciate that you've opened it up again to listen. Mike, I totally respect whatever decision is made. I just can't argue it. I have to argue it hard up until the time there's a vote. And then once there's a vote, democracy takes over and we follow the process. So thank you for listening.
We'd expect nothing less, Jerry.
That's what makes America great. Now, not again.
Jerry, thanks for your input and your work on this project.
Chris McQ would like to say something. Just a reminder, if you would like to speak to the selectmen, just please put your name and address in the comment section and I can promote you and allow you to speak.
Hi Chris, thanks for coming.
Hi, thank you. Am I unmuted? Yes, thanks. I think the two things that I just want to, the thing, two things that bother me, I think the most about the Wheelock site is, you know, having looked back through old annual, to old town annual reports, you know, looking at what the objectives of the town leaders have said and what the community has said between multiple master plans, between, again, reports in those documents, is that the same theme has been expressed over and over again by people who have lived here over the years. And that is they care about the history of the, protecting the history of the town. They care about protecting open space. And they care about a lot of the environmental issues. And, and it seems like with this project over at Wheelock, it runs counter to a lot of the, a lot of the goals and the objectives that the people of our community have said time and time again that they care about. And, and I feel like that that is not bit acknowledged. I think that oftentimes you do have town goals and you do have, have to have, make compromises that sometimes, sometimes town goals compete against each other and you have to figure out which ones are more, more important. But I feel like that has not been acknowledged in this case with the Wheelock site. That road has been noted in past annual reports as being historic. It's noted as being scenic. It was noted that, that the town specifically purchased land behind Wheelock to protect our wells from development. And so putting another ginormous school there in that area seems to run counter to that. And even though, you know, it's easy enough to say, well, our bylaws permit a building to be, a school building to be placed there, just because our, something allows it, doesn't mean that it's the sensible thing to do. I also worry deeply about the fact that this, this site is in an archaeological protection district. And I, you know, I'm, I've been talking to different residents that have, that have lived over there a very long time. And I've also talked to people who are very, you know, have in-depth information about our historical resources in town. And I have been hearing that when Wheelock was built, that literally Native American artifacts were bulldozed over during that construction period. And I also have documents that show that artifacts were actually found on, on a lot of the adjacent land. So what I worry about is that Mass Historical Commission is going to come back and they're going to ask for a lot more time to do analysis. And it's also going to be an extra cost that's not being factored into the project. And it also again goes back to what we treasure in our town in terms of preserving the character, preserving the history, preserving the open space. And that building is not a small building and that building is, could, could cause a lot of damage to our open space in town. And, and I, and I, I just wish that even, that I just wish that that concern was articulated at some point in time in this process. And, and, and I almost feel like, I mean, I, I, same with Jerry. I mean, I have a lot of respect for the people that are on this committee and the time and effort that's been put into it. But there have been times where I feel like the things that have been said about this project are, are closer to private developers than people who are on a, on a town committee who share the desire to protect these things that all of us care so much about. And, and, and that concerns me. I do think that, that once this building, if that building is built behind Wheelock, people will go by it and will be very, very sad that this was built there because of the sheer size and impact that's going to have on that space. And I think the, the other thing that I just want to ask now, separate from what I just said, is I do think that the community, community deserves to see, the public deserves to see the PSR before it is submitted to the, to the, to the, to the MSBA. Because there's a lot of detail and unanswered questions that are, that's going to be incorporated into that PSR that the public deserves to see before MSBA gets it. And I, I'd like to know what the timeline is for that. So that's it. Thank you.
Chris, thank you so much for coming tonight and, and for all of your work on this topic. You've been tireless and you've clearly become an expert on this. And you've taught me a lot, I know, certainly. And, and, and I guess I would say that, you know, don't think that this is an easy decision. It's, it's, there's a lot of, of reasons and factors on both sides. And, and so that all these arguments that you have raised, which have been very thoughtful and good arguments, make it very difficult. But it's, you know, that's, we're here to make that decision. So we listen, me, I listened and made the decision.
Can I put you on the spot, Mike? If I'm really putting you on the spot, I'll apologize. But Chris has asked for the public availability, the PSR before it's submitted. Is that an unreasonable request?
So let me just explain the PSR first, if you don't mind.
Yep.
So the preferred schematic report is a compilation of thousands of pages of documents. And I would say probably about 98% are already out in the public and have been through this process. Between now and then, the design team will be refining the, the preferred option and sort of bring a higher level of design to it. And, and then pulling together really kind of what I would call administrative documents. It has, has to do with just sort of finalizing, you know, the actions that occurred, like the vote tonight, certain, you know, providing meeting minutes and stuff for, for the subsequent meetings that will occur. So it's not like there's sort of any big surprise coming. That said, the PSR will be presented at the SBC meetings that will occur in, in December and it'll be voted on then before it is submitted. So it will be made available to public before it's submitted once it is finalized. So, so that'll be presented in December to the SBC meeting. The goal is to get that submitted before the holidays so that, you know, we don't have our design team and, and OPM team working over the holidays. It is due by the 29th of December, but we're trying to get it in before Christmas.
And Mike, I should know, I undoubtedly should know the answer to this question, but the vote to approve the PSR, that's an SBC vote, not a-
So basically, yes. So the way it works is the vote tonight is to, is for the Board of Selectmen to approve our recommended preferred schematic option. And subsequently then the, the SBC votes to submit the PSR as it's presented by our design team and OPM.
So, so the answer what I, that I heard from you is that right now, 90% of those materials are already available, but, but I'm guessing it would be hard for people, that people wouldn't necessarily know what that, where, which things are in it and which things are out of it. So there's probably-
A large, a large chunk of it is already available. A large chunk of it is, is repeat material from PDP phase. It includes some other data that's been done during this PSR phase. And all of those documents are available through the, the school website. So, and, and what I can do is, if it'll help, is I'll make, I'll, I'll talk it through with the design and OPM team and we'll outline what has not been publicly shared such that people can be on the lookout for that when it comes around in December.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
There's just a few comments. Does not appear they want to speak live, so I'll read their comments for you.
Thank you.
Scott Lowell, we would all like to have a Cadillac, but sometimes you have to settle for a Toyota. The increasing tax rate just can't keep going up. You're going to squeeze people out of the market. Kevin Stoddard, my comment is that the people who did have all the information and thought it through unanimously agree it should be at Wheelock, school building committee, the school board, and it seems the selectmen, the selectmen have a good idea as to what the town goals are and taking those into consideration when making their decisions. Kevin Stoddard, Stoddard, Six Baker Road. J H R S, there's no address, would like somebody to speak again about the traffic concerns on Elm Street and the possibility of having to expand the bridge.
Expansion of the bridge is absolutely not part of this project, nor would, nor do we see it as being required for this project. I don't know who started that rumor, but I can tell you that that is not part of anything that we would consider. We don't see significant levels of traffic in, increasing in that direction due to this project. So that's not something that's on, on our agenda for this project.
Okay. And the last comment I have is from TP. Appreciate all of your efforts, folks. It does seem traffic concerns have largely been dismissed. It would seem to me that few private enterprises would move forward with a $50 to $80 million project, saying they would look at the traffic issues later. That's just me. I respect your efforts. And I lost the last of his message.
Can I, can I chime in on traffic? Cause I know it's a big concern. So this hasn't been dismissed. I, I disagree that traffic has been dismissed. Unfortunately, we just couldn't get numbers in the spring when school was in session because of COVID and the school was closed. So once the fall came around and we were able to and able to get some traffic counts, it was discovered and, and reported in the public forum last week that traffic levels in and around Medfield came in at about 90% pre-COVID levels from 2019. So we were then able to do some factoring to start to look at some projections for what the increase in the number of trips to the site would be. That number came in around 110 vehicles trips. So we're now looking at what that means in terms of additional potential wait times at the intersection of South and Elm, which incidentally, we're seeing right now because we are seeing a, a large increase right now in parent trips since we're unable to bus kids. That said, when we do open this building, we will, we will be back, I imagine, we'll be back to, to our normal busing levels. This town buses close to 90% of its elementary school kids. So that will help to mitigate any factors in terms of the, the individual car traffic. And that said, we are continuing to explore it. We haven't dismissed it. It's going to be a major focus in the next phase as we start to look at ways to mitigate it and make sure that we're minimizing the impacts on the neighborhood. The focus so far has been on the improvement of the South and Elm intersection, which seems to be what, what could be the log jam in the future in terms of additional car trips. So that's going to be one focus, but we're going to look at all options for mitigating traffic in the neighborhood.
Actually, can I, can I just quickly pop in here? Tom and Christine, I am the one who mistakenly dismissed Tom Powers.
Oh, that's-
It was literally a finger slip. I don't want anyone to think I am randomly just poofing people into the air.
So I could jump in on that one because I, I tracked his down. We've, we've had an exchange on emails and, and he's, he's already heard a lot of this. So he, he knows and I appreciate his comment both for sticking by his opinion, but also respecting the process and the ideas. There's two, there's two things that I would comment on here. First off, he used the $50 to $80 million project. And in the emails that I've gotten, there are a lot of people who are confused between the $59 million number and the $80 million number. And they think it's, one project is 59 and the other one is 80. And I think that might account for some of the comments I've gotten around why, you know, we should go with the much cheaper option. So just to be clear for everybody, the projected total cost for these buildings ranges, Mike, from 77 million to 80 million.
Yeah, the, the, the Dale Street new builds are around 72. The ad reno at Dale was 80.5. The new builds at Wheelock are 76 and a half to 77 and a half in terms of the project cost. Yes.
So the all up cost, if for everything, those are those numbers. But what we are concerned about from a town standpoint is the net cost to the town and that's going to be the cost of the town after the MSBA reimbursement of, I was using the third more or less to begin with, but I think you guys used 25%. I think you said.
Yeah. So we actually started to develop some detail on this, but these are numbers that we can't have done until we get through the next phase. But we were able to put estimates together based on projections for what is eligible versus ineligible and reimbursement. And this definitely goes down a rabbit hole of MSBA language. So bear with me. But essentially what we're looking at is a reimbursement from the state of between 17 and a half million to 20 and a half million. The, the ad reno was a higher, much higher cost to build, but a higher reimbursement. So that's why that number, the net cost to Medfield is about a half a million dollars higher than the Wheelock site that, that we're voting on this evening. But those are in the range of, if we're looking at net cost to Medfield, it's between 55 and 59 to 60 million for the ad reno.
And then the other, the other point, now I'll expose my own ignorance maybe here, but the way I looked at the traffic issues that were raised, whether it's through ignorance or whether it's prudent judgment, I don't know. I, in the absence of an option that had such a, a drastic, serious traffic issue that would preclude a site, the way I looked at the traffic issues were that that, those are real issues that absolutely have to be addressed when you're carrying a project out. So to the point about dismissing the traffic issues, what I would say is I personally dismiss the traffic issues as a prerequisite for a particular option to be acceptable. But I would absolutely think that in this project, the town would be taking a good, hard look and undoubtedly putting some serious investment into whatever steps are required to address those traffic issues. So not dismissing the urgency or the significance of people's concerns there. But for me at least, I didn't view that as the kind of thing that belonged at the very front end of a decision on a site. It's something that belongs as a serious consideration when you're trying to carry a project out.
Our next-
Let me know if you think I don't know what I'm talking about there.
Our next comment is from Kathy McDonald at 99 Elm Street. Has a comment that it's very frustrating to continue dismissing traffic on the far end of Elm. Kathy, if you just want to speak, let me know. You didn't indicate that you wanted to speak live. I have Steve from-
Can I respond to Kathy real quick?
Absolutely.
So, so it hasn't been dismissed. The reason why we're not putting a huge focus on it and we will continue to study it. And, and we may even do some, some traffic counts just so we really understand what's going on in that direction. Is that the number of, of houses where people or, or children may come from to get to this site that would increase due to this project is, is fairly small before you end up in, in Walpole. I recognize that, you know, there are some people that may cut through this, that, that neighborhood to get to Walpole or to come from some other direction. But the overwhelming majority of traffic does flow in the other direction. It's, it's, it's not off our radar. I, I hope you don't feel that way. We'll continue to have more conversations about it and, and then we'll do some actual data collection. So we're dealing with real numbers and so we can see what's going on.
And I have Steve from One Cross Street who would like to address the selectmen.
Hi Steve, thank you for coming.
Yeah. Hey, thanks. Thanks for, for having us. And I also wanted to just thank everybody for their service. And although I'm going to talk about the, the situation with the Wheelock, I couldn't help but, you know, listen to the beginning of the meeting and listening to all of our folks in the, working in the school administration, dealing with the COVID situation. You guys are doing a really great job. administration dealing with the COVID situation. You guys are doing a really great job, so we should all be thankful for that. And, you know, and I live on Cross Street, which you guys probably know is near, near, near Wheelock and one, I actually, I mean, the traffic, it's a little bit questionable about how much additional traffic there'll be. There probably will be more. But the concern I actually have is there's no sidewalk on Cross Street and there's no sidewalk on Philip Street. And I have to tell you, sitting outside my, looking outside my window virtually every day, let's say pre-COVID and then eventually post-COVID, there are cars flying around, coming through Noelwood, taking a left onto Cross, cutting through to avoid the traffic on South. It is an absolute hazard. And I can speak personally when I've had to step out of the way of them because there's no sidewalk. And so I think if we move forward with the Wheelock site, we have to do something about the lack of sidewalk there. Even if there's just a few walkers to the school, it, it only takes one to have to deal with one of these speeding cars. So I would just, and I know Mike has talked about that in the past, but at the previous meeting, you seemed to sort of back off on the possibility of sidewalks. I really think that should somehow be a prerequisite for, for building over there because it's, somebody's going to get hurt because of the, because of the cars. Thanks, thanks again, everybody.
Steve, thank you for coming. I, I absolutely agree with you that if we're going to build a school at, at the Wheelock area, we've got to really explore the, where the sidewalks should go. The DPW actually has a committee now that is, is looking at the issue of where sidewalks should be put in town. And certainly one of the major sidewalk issues is you want to have sidewalks in your routes to schools.
Go ahead, Steve. I, I did throw up on screen. I've been, I have been thinking a lot about this, Steve. And, you know, I did a little informal survey myself, just to kind of make sure I understood it a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, I, I completely get it, especially Cross, as you can see. You know, really is the one, the one street. I mean, Philip is, is further out, but it's definitely a street without sidewalks. You know, I haven't, you know, ruled out some sort of sidewalk installation. We just have to be careful about costs. So, so we'll need to balance all of that, but that may be something that we look at as a way to help improve the area. And maybe there's, there's other funds or something that Pete mentions in terms of other plans that the DPW has to install sidewalks. What I haven't done, and I'm not sure, I don't know Cross as well as you, obviously, is, is, you know, how much is it feasible to put sidewalks through there? In terms, I know there's some, some hills and some, some ledge along one side. So I, I just think that we would need to take a close look at that. But no, it's not. It hasn't been ruled out as, as an option. The only thing we have to be care, careful about is again, spending extra money.
I would think that we would want to be looking at, at controls as to when people can turn into Noelwood and Cross as well. Certain times of day, maybe you can't go in from certain directions.
Yeah, I mean, this has come up before and I, I recognize like this neighborhood and it has less to do with this issue is, is it is a cut through area during Russia. So.
Noel, Noelwood has come to the Board of Selectment about speeding in the past because of the cut through.
And, you know, so in my eyes, and I'm just beginning to think about this in a little more detail, one of the things that came out of last week's meeting was, you know, do we turn Noelwood one way for a certain period of the day? You know, or maybe it, you know, reverses depending on morning or afternoon. And one of the things that came up is part of the reasons it's a cut through is because of the middle school, high school traffic backing up. So is there some mitigation that could happen there such that people don't need to cut through that neighborhood? So I, I think, you know, we're going to do some more analysis on this and, and it can snowball. I don't, I don't want this to turn into a project that becomes, you know, sort of a townwide traffic issue. We want to mitigate that neighborhood certainly, but some of the issues are outside of the control of this project. But we'll do our best, I guess, is the best I can say at this point.
The next question, Mike, is for you regarding schematic design estimates can vary up to twenty percent. How will this possible cost escalation be managed?
So escalation is factored into the numbers that have been presented. We would, we would not put forth numbers based on today's construction values. Whenever we do estimates, we're factoring in where escalation is. And obviously that's something that changes and it'll be, we'll be doing more cost estimates in the next round, which are going to be key because in the next round in the MSBA's process is where we set what's called a project scope and budget. And that's where we come to an agreement with the MSBA on how much this project's going to cost the town and how much the MSBA is going to reimburse us for it. And then we put that in front of the town for a vote. The MSBA's process, because it requires that vote at the end of schematic design, is a little different than how we've done municipal projects here in the past where we've come with hard bid numbers. But all of their projects contain escalation and, and construction contingencies to accommodate, you know, bid day type surprises. Now, the other possibility is, you know, we could see bids coming lower than expected. That is also a possibility. The construction market obviously is, is pretty volatile. We're, we're still not exactly sure what the impacts on, on the COVID, that COVID will have on the construction market yet. I could tell you, we've seen bids come in, we've had two bids come in post-COVID. One was significantly under budget by a million and a half on a thirty million dollar project. And then we've seen some bids that are coming in at or slightly above budgets. So I think it remains to be seen what's going to happen with the market, but we don't need to make those decisions right now. Ultimately, you know, we'll get some more information over the next year before we actually vote on the cost.
And the last comment I have is from Hillary Zivin. As someone who watches buses and parent traffic daily in front of my home at eleven Elm Street, the buses go by every day with a couple of children in every bus and the parent cars stream by profusely. I cannot understand that eighty percent of Medfield kids ride the bus and why the buses are nearly empty.
So that's, that's COVID related.
I mean, I'll happy, happily answer that question. So I guess it depends on whether it's this year. So this year they are fairly empty because we have seventy one passenger buses and we can only have up to twenty four kids on them. And that's the regulations from the state. If it's the previous years, you might be seeing buses that have dropped kids off at Dale and Memorial already, and then dropping kids off at Wheelock because we have the same bus. You know, that the same buses go to all three buildings in a normal, you know, brick and mortar year, not with COVID. If it was years ago, when I first got here, eight years ago, there were three tiers of busing. So there was a separate tier just for Wheelock. So that would make sense. I remember my first day here, welcoming the kids off the bus at Wheelock and there were like six or seven kids on the bus and that the following year we changed it and made it two tier busing because it didn't seem to make much sense to have a third tier. So in any of those timeframes, that's, that's the answer.
Hey, Mike, can I ask you a quick question also in laying out that process? How does the model, what is a model school design, you know, the standard MSBA's, Nick, model school design? Got the right words?
If, if you're talking about, yeah, a model school.
How does, how does that fit in?
That process would have, would have had to have started long time ago before we started this process. And I, I could tell you that, that the MSBA generally speaking is not moving in that direction towards model schools. But typically you have to commit to that process before you hire on designers and, and because basically what, what they're saying is, all right, we can take this design off the shelf and sort of slightly modify it to, to meet the site that it's on. But that, that decision needs, would have need to have been before. You know.
I didn't realize.
Many, many months ago.
The option.
What's that?
I didn't realize we didn't have the option to look at those before we go final on a design. Because it sounds like those are, if you find one that works, it sounds like that's a significantly lower cost school.
No, I believe, I believe they've actually seen that, that they're not always a significant savings as expected.
But I, we just built, when my prior job, we built a model school in Marlboro. We did that after preferred schematic. So I would suggest that we follow up with MSBA if that's something Gussie would like some information.
Oh, of course I would, because we're, my view is right now, even with the projected, you know, first off, this, the building committee has acknowledged the estimates that we're looking at now are conservative, meaning they're high end estimates. So I'm expecting the cost to go down, but basically I'm looking, I have a target number of what the, what the ultimate cost should be. So yeah, I'd like to, in, in recognition of the number of people who've talked about the tax impact, absolutely, I want to see it down there.
Let me, let me get together with our OPM and design team and we'll see what the options are.
Yeah, and include Nick on that too, because he, he saved eleven million for Marlboro on their sixty nine million dollar school. Going that route.
Okay.
And then the other thing that we, we need to be sure about, Mike, too, is the net zero. Because we don't want to miss out on that. Kim Cullinan from EverSource says that she, she should be in the process already.
Well, I, I appreciate, Ever, EverSource wants to be in, at the very beginning, but that doesn't mean the town's always ready to, are, are always ready to commit to certain programs. I'm, I'm very familiar. Kim and I have spoken multiple times about this project and other projects.
Have you spoken to her recently about this? Because she says things have changed.
No, I know they have a new program because actually I'm exploring the same thing for my client in Ashland.
Yeah, please talk, please, please talk to her.
Yep, I'm very familiar with that. And as I've mentioned to Fred Davis, you know, my plan in the next, and I'll discuss it at the next SBC meeting, is to form a sustainability subcommittee because I know, you know, the Board of Selectmen are going to look for a lot of data around that because once again, that, that requires increasing the upfront cost for some, some long-term paybacks. So.
Hey, Mike, I'm not sure that's true. We had, we had a Lexington selectman come in and describe a project that didn't cost anything more upfront. That's, that's by standard right now is that's where we ought to be.
Gus, that's not true.
You know what? If people are wasting our time in Board of Selectmen's meetings, bringing other selectmen's in to give us garbage, I got an issue.
No, no, no. So let me explain because what, what Mark Sandin was saying was that if, let's say he, they had to increase the upfront cost by three million dollars to go to a net zero building, that the savings from an operational perspective, as well as any incentives, would offset the additional yearly cash flow. So it was just basically how he phrases it. It's not that it doesn't cost as much from the beginning. It does cost more to build some of these systems. Geothermal wells are not cheaper than conventional systems. What he's saying is that we can save, according to our model, we can save, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in, in cash flow, which then a hundred thousand dollars in debt service means X number of million dollars in borrowing.
Yeah, that's not actually what he said in the presentation though, Mike. He basically talked about incentive payments that they got for managing their demand. I watched very closely because I don't want to, I don't want to be sold a, you know, a wimpy, I'll gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today on this stuff.
I'm sorry, Gus, that's my line.
The reason it caught my attention was that he surprisingly painted a picture that looked like we actually could manage this on a straight cash, you know, cash flows upfront. It was, it would work. Now, I wasn't sure after I talked with you whether some pieces of that were tied into actual performance.
Yeah, so that's, that's not my experience, Gus.
Well, so, yeah, I just want to make sure we don't laugh.
I'm happy to be convinced otherwise. I haven't seen anything that's convinced me that, that there's just this magic number of dollars that's going to show up and pay for more expensive systems. I recognize that there are incentives out there, but they usually are nowhere near in the range of what it costs to actually build these systems. So you do look at years of payback and, and so I recognize also that they, they entered into power purchasing agreements, which I think are definitely on the table for this project. I'm not shooting it down by any stretch. All I'm saying is living in the worlds of models, the, where the rubber meets the road is what the end result is. And I just haven't always seen, I could tell you that I just went through a heavy analysis with my client in Ashland. And what they quickly realized is that even going to a net zero ready building, they weren't actually saving any money year to year and that they needed to do the photovoltaics to get to the true net zero in order to really see a benefit. So kind of taking interim steps along the way wasn't of benefit to them. So it's, it's all, it's all well and good, but this is my point about why there's a heavy amount of analysis and data that surrounds all this that I want to make sure is clear to you. So I think this requires some additional legwork by like a subcommittee of those that are interested, which I, I would welcome the Medfield Energy Committee to have a representative on. So there's a lot to be studied and, and presented to you before we make any sort of policy decisions. So that's definitely something that's going to be a big focus of our efforts during the next phase and early because we want to make some of these decisions over, you know, the next, you know, say three to four months or so, so that the design team can spend time incorporating it all over the summer so that we can get good cost estimates in time for a special town meeting in the fall.
So my, my, my issue, Mike, is my issue is that I.
Yeah, the energy committee has raised my expectations. So.
I'm, I'm not surprised.
Yeah, they've raised my expectations too. And so my concern is that we just don't miss out on any opportunities to do this. Kim Cullinan from EverSource is telling me that she should be in our, our project already. So so, you know, that's what I'm listening to. And so that, and we can get some free benefit from EverSource out of this.
So there's, there's still plenty.
I, I would just ask you to talk to her.
Yep, I, I'm happy to talk to Kim. I've spoken to her about this project already and and, and the, the problem, Pete, is that we can't, we can't do any sort of significant modeling around a project until we have a project. And we've been exploring multiple options up until tonight.
I, I don't understand the details of it, but I, I know that she's telling me that it would be better if she was already in. So please talk to her.
I will. Yep.
Anything else that we, any more comments, Chris?
Yes, we have additional comments. Chris McQ Potts would like to say, just to follow up on the request for public access to the PSR prior to submission to MSBA. There were important questions posed by the MSBA in May in response to the PDP and Medfield responded that the info would be provided in the PSR. Specific items included a grade four, five specific educational plan update, results of environmental site assessments, especially related to buried tanks and to rule out soil contamination, public safety input and more detailed traffic assessments. Much of this information should have been determined and publicly provided prior to site selection, not after. Denise DePiero is asking, did we not do an independent traffic study? And this is being voted on tonight. If there is a concern about the money to build sidewalks and rerouting traffic, it sounds like Dale would be a more desirable location. If we can't afford traffic mitigation, we shouldn't be promoting this location. Hillary Zivin, I believe, is commenting back to Dr. Marsden that the mostly buses are not this year. It's been every year for many years that she's lived and watched buses go home on Elm Street. And then last comment I have is from Chris McQ Potts. Also, based on the enrollment certification form, it is worded in such a way that seems to leave open the possibility of MSBA reducing enrollment based on updated information and therefore building size for the design phase. Is that a true interpretation? Is it possible MSBA viewed the request for an enrollment reduction prematurely during feasibility phase?
So I guess I'll take this in terms of the MSBA enrollment. Basically, we would need to prove to the MSBA that their numbers are wrong with, say, new information, like say, a large housing development that was factored into the enrollment failed and, and it didn't go forward. There's no new information that I'm aware of that we have to justify a position to the MSBA that their enrollment should go down significantly. You know, if, if there's new information out there, I'm unaware of it.
Chris, are all, those all the comments then?
Just received another comment. So being a hundred and nine students under projection this year isn't new from Chris McQ Potts.
Not in terms of the, it's, it's based off of COVID. So is, is that a factual data point? Is that something that's going to be consistent? I'm not a demographer, but you know, the, the MSBA is fully aware of COVID. And even after our discussion, you know, they advised us that, you know, that they stand by their numbers.
So one of the facts in the townwide master planning is the statement that the Massachusetts Area Planning Council expects our enrollment to go down. So they're basically predicting the opposite of MSBA.
They, they expect, isn't it Norfolk County's enrollment in general?
They, they expect, uh, isn't it Norfolk County's enrollment in general to go down, but there are specific, uh, there are specific towns within that, that, uh, tend to be anomalous within that, within that demography.
Within that. Medfield was noted by the MSBA as having what's known as an abnormal, um, birth, uh, birth to kindergarten ratio. Um, that's a key ratio that they factor into their enrollment.
Don't anybody take that personally, by the way.
So, um, it's, it's not the norm. You're right. In some of the other towns that we're working with, um, enrollment is stable, and in some even decreasing, um, across the state. Um, I would say that Medfield is an outlier in that, um, that's not what they're projecting for Med, for Medfield.
And I could be remembering that incorrectly, but I do seem to remember, uh, looking at it and thinking, oh, and then realizing that it was, uh, very much speaking about this Norfolk County, which is such a, a very diverse group of towns.
You know, I, I, I remember it differently, Jess, but I may be wrong.
Very wrong. It's, it's only been like.
Because I remember picking it, thinking.
I read it.
I remember, for me, it highlighted the discrepancy with the MSBA's projection, and it jumped out at me because of that.
Yeah.
But I don't have.
At the same time, we also had, uh, the, I mean, we had dual projections that year that, that were generally about the same, um, and that, you know, it's, so it was kind of, I, I'm not arguing that the MSBA is correct to the, to the letter or the number, but I do think that it's reasonable to think that we would be trending upward for a period of time, but, you know.
And if we want their money, we have to build to their size, apparently, so.
And I like other people's money.
Yep.
Money that comes from out of town.
Chris, anything else in the chat?
We have two more comments, uh, three more comments. Um, Jerry Potts, to be clear, enrollment is down everywhere. It's demographics overall, and the MSH, uh, does not plan on a large influx of students, never did. Um, Chris McQ Potts, with our rising tax rate, we are losing the affordability factor now. This has been recently expressed by real estate agents. It's becoming much harder for families with young children to move to Medfield. Uh, TP, it still seems like Chris was asking to have the PSR be shared with townspeople before it's sent to MSBA, or at least the same time. It doesn't sound like this was answered or addressed, and she has asked it twice. I may be wrong, but I think that's why folks are getting frustrated.
No, I did, I did answer that, that it will be shared at our December SBC meeting and will be posted subsequent to that, once it's finalized. And then it will be submitted to the MSBA after we've had a chance to vote on it.
Mike, Mike, just to clear up any confusion there, so it'll be available, you'll be discussing it at the December S, uh, SBC meeting. You, are, you'll be finalizing it at that meeting?
The, we will be voting on it, yes. The, the idea is that if there are any edits, um, again, because the overwhelming majority of this information has already been, um, um, posted publicly, um, that.
So if people want to.
It, it should be minor edits that will be coming out through the December meeting, so we'll be voting on it. Um, I don't expect there to be major edits from this. This is really, this is not like some sort of new, this is a report of all the things we've talked about to date. Um, this is not new information, new stuff that hasn't been, um, really documented. And as I noted, I'll, I'll talk to our OPM and design team, and we'll document what may have not been, um, we'll highlight what may have not been, uh, put publicly, um, in that document, so people can, um, jump right into it if they really want to, because it's going to be a multi-thousand-page document.
So if a member of the public did want to review it before it went final and provide comments, when could they do that and how would they do that?
Well, I would say that the first thing would be, I suggest they attend the SBC meetings. Secondly, we will post it as soon as, um, as soon as it's been, um, discussed in the SBC meeting, so it would be subsequent to that meeting, um, when it.
Why can't, why can't we just post it as a draft before the meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we gotta, I have to, I'll check with them, but I, we gotta have a draft, um, distributed. Um, once, once I have a draft, like, they have, they still have a lot of work to do. This has already been kind of a compressed, you know, assemblage. Um, so, um, we can certainly post the draft once it's ready, but that may be a few days beforehand or something like that.
I, I, I think that's fine.
That's fine.
I think, I think, I think, I think we've tried to do this, I mean, I, you know, we do, obviously do it for the Board of Selectmen, all of our meetings, we post all of our materials when we post our agenda and update them. So if we can just post it when it gets sent around, that way people can read them and talk about it in the meeting itself. That, that would seem to me to be the way to go.
That's fine.
Uh, I think that the biggest sensitivity there is if people do want to have an input. If they can't see it until the meeting that you're discussing it, finalizing it and voting on it, then there's no, there's no opportunity. It may, it may be, I mean, to your point, if it's thousands of pages, either we have some really dedicated people that really want to have inputs, or what may be, to your, you were saying you'd ask them to put together what the materials are that maybe people haven't seen or don't have access to. And I'm guessing that's not thousands of pages, but it would be the most recent stuff. But I think, I think that's what was behind those questions, is if we wanted to look at it, react to it, provide inputs before you finalize it, how do we do that?
Sure. So, um, so I would expect it the first week of December, we will post the draft. Um, and we have an SBC meeting scheduled for the ninth of December.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, Chris?
I have no more comments.
Any more comments from my colleagues?
I have no more comments.
Do we have a motion, then?
Sure. I would move that we accept and approve the recommendation from the School Building Committee to submit a PSR with a proposed school building on the Elm Street site as proposed.
Op, option G one.
Option G one.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye.
Thank you. Um, I think, I don't know, Chris, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Uh, are you still going to do the, um, membership change?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay, you want me to stick around?
Uh, we have a pretty full agenda. If you want, we could probably do it right now and let you go for the evening.
Now you know where I'm going.
So the issue is accepting Sharon Tetro's resignation on the school building, Dale Street School Building Committee, and appoint Bob Slaney as the warrant committee's represent, resident, representative. Sharon, Sharon's gotten exceedingly busy, and, uh, so, and Bob's ready to, to step in. So do we have a, do we need to discuss that, or do we have a motion?
I am prepared to move to appoint Bob and accept Sharon's recognition, resignation without, uh, discussion. So I move that we appoint Bob Slaney to the Dale Street School Building Committee as a non-voting member, as the warrant committee's representative.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
And just one passing word, uh, just want to thank Sharon for her work. And we look forward to working with Bob. I've had some great conversations with him about the project already, so, um, we look forward to more warrant committee involvement.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike, for coming tonight. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Mike.
And then, uh, Jess.
The school committee needs to, uh, formally dissolve.
Uh, Sharon did want everybody to know. She said, thanks, I'll miss you guys, but you will know where to find me.
Well, I, I don't know if she knows this, but lying on Zoom is, it might be a crime, I'm not sure. I don't think she's going to miss it at all, frankly.
So is, is the school committee leaving us now? Do you guys need to do a, a vote?
They want to weigh in on the salt contract.
Oh, we want to stick around. This is exciting stuff.
Yes, you're on mute.
We say.
You're on mute.
We can't hear you, Jess.
Well, that, that, that makes it apparent why I am not getting, uh, second. To adjourn, um, the school committee meeting?
Second.
Meeting, second, all right. And, uh, Anna Mae O'Shea Brook?
Yes.
Megan Glenn?
Yes.
Lea Brem?
Yes.
Tim Knight?
Yes.
Jessica Riley, yes, and thank you ever so much. Appreciate your, uh, hosting us. Thanks.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. So our next item is the update on COVID nineteen status operations and CARES funding. Is anything on that, Chris?
No, we covered all of the CARES funding under our first agenda item, so we can move on.
Liquor license fees for twenty twenty-one.
So I brought this to you about a month ago, um, and we didn't have a decision on it, and it was at the end of the meeting, so I wanted to have a chance to, to bring it up again. So my recommendation, uh, was to reduce the liquor license fees for our restaurants by fifty percent, um, and bring them from two thousand to one thousand. And I know, Gus, you had a comment that it was concerning to you that we were benefiting, giving a benefit to one business that we weren't for all of our businesses. And I've been thinking about that a lot, and I still feel strongly about this. Um, our restaurants are the, one of the few businesses in town that have to pay an annual fee like this to the town. And without them in business, we lose that local meals tax that we talked about earlier. So I, I would like to see our restaurants be given any little piece that can keep them in our downtown. I really view them as the anchors to our downtown. They tend to bring people, um, to our downtown, so I'm still asking, uh, permission for you to reduce that by fifty percent tonight. It will reduce our local receipts by seven thousand dollars. I'm only recommending that for our full alcohol restaurants, so we would, we would see a reduction in seven thousand dollars for our local receipts.
Which, which would have to be made up by taxpayers?
Correct.
Pete and Mike?
Well, this would be for next year, right?
It's for the renewal. That would be, their renewals have to be in by November thirtieth, and then we do the approval in December, so it would be, uh, the fee they're paying now.
But do we count that revenue for fiscal year twenty-one or fiscal year twenty-two?
It's going to be in fiscal year twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so I mean, it's not really necessarily being made up by taxpayers. I mean, we're probably going to spend seven thousand dollars less, you know, here and there, I would think. Because we can't tax, we're, we're in a tax to the amount that was appropriated already. We can't tax.
We have to make this decision before or after the tax classification hearing.
You really need to make it tonight, because they have to do their, uh, their renewals, um, to the, um, liquor licensing board, the ABCC. So I, I apologize. I should have brought it up again at the last meeting. It fell off my radar, because we talked about it about a month ago.
Pete? Newton, uh, I think finally decided that it was not a, a, a problem in terms of legalities. They, it's, I think, raised some concerns about it, and they, they sorted their concerns out and went ahead and did it. I know Needham did it. I, I, I'm fine doing it myself. I guess, I, I think the, the restaurants have probably been hit pretty hard. Although anecdotally, I heard one, that Avenue had three hundred meals in one night. That sounded like a lot to me. I know that, uh, someone told me that the guy selling barbecue, uh, up at the hospital, that, uh, that they were selling pretty well, that the, one of the employees had three thousand dollars in her pocket, reportedly. Sounded like a lot of barbecue got sold, so. Although that, that's one of those ones where we, you know, the town doesn't participate that, in that one probably at all in terms of licensing fees, or the, the meals tax should get reported on that, but.
Right.
I guess maybe we do.
There's no alcohol licensing fee for, we don't allow food trucks.
No.
So, good, Mike?
Matt, I, I have no issue with this. We, you don't really incur any costs in respect of, of this license. I mean, so I don't think we employ anybody correctly to democracy. Can we employ somebody to inspect these locations? That, that would offset. And usually the, the rationale for licensing fees, other than just being a, a cash grab for the government in a way for incumbents to exclude competition, um, usually it's to offset the cost of, um, the regulatory work. So we, we charge building permit fees to offset the cost of having an inspection department. Here, I, I don't know, I assume the health department reviews them for their restaurant license, reviews that, the health, and gives them a certificate for that, but I mean, if it's two thousand dollars a year, are we doing two thousand dollars of work on each of these places and supervising their, uh, use of their alcohol license?
No, and we have, our businesses are, are incredibly, uh, respectful of our liquor licensing laws, and I can't remember the last time in twenty years that we've had to have a hearing regarding one of our businesses for some sort of, um, you know, problem with their license, which is usually what your costs are offsetting, your investigations or anything like that. And I, I can't remember when we've had one like that. Um, I did speak to, when I was at the election last week, I did speak to one of our local restaurants, um, about this issue, and they basically said, any little bit that would help, the governor's new guidance had come out about them closing earlier. They're concerned about the winter. They did bring up the fact that there was a period of time last this year in March that they weren't allowed to sell alcohol, but still had to, you know, had paid for their license, so they just wanted to weigh in on a few of those items as well.
All right, you all have convinced me. I'm okay with it.
All right, then I would move that we set the liquor license for this year's renewal at, uh, one thousand dollars.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Oh, oh, yes, yes, go ahead, Mr. Sorel.
Here comes Mark Sorel.
You need to be specific as to which licenses this relates to.
Our all-alcohol restaurant licenses, as I mentioned earlier.
I would move that our all-alcohol license renewal fee for twenty twenty-one be set at one thousand dollars. Is that right, Mark?
All alcohol restaurant.
All, I move that our all-alcohol restaurant license fee for twenty twenty-one be set at one thousand dollars.
Is that a mo- motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye. And next we have.
Mr. Chairman, just to dive, for dive, diaring ahead, this, this issue will need to be revisited next year. So, uh, be, to make sure that the rates, if you're going to go back to what they were originally, or continue a lower rate, so somebody just ought to put it on their diary now.
We, we'll continue with the lower rate until we take action on it?
Uh, unless you, unless you word it differently right now.
I think our intent was to word it differently.
So, so, Mark, would you like me to amend my motion again? So it should be a one-year red, should I make it a move?
For, for the next, for this coming year, only fees to go back to the original amount for the fa- the following year, whatever that, twenty twenty.
So I move that with respect to our all-alcohol restaurant license for the year twenty twenty-one, we lower the fee temporarily for that year only to revert back to the regular fee of two thousand dollars on January first, twenty twenty-two, to set the fee at one thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Am I good?
Good.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye.
And that's how the sausage gets made.
We're two hours and forty-five minutes into this meeting, and that's the first we've heard of Mark.
So next we have, uh, the Senior Tax Work Off Program, and I think we're going to hear from Roberta Lynch, of the ex-director of the Council on Aging, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
I'm going to give a little, a little background on this. Georgia and Vaughn have been working very closely with Roberta on this issue, and I had discussed it with you a few times. Um, we employ sixty-seven seniors through the Senior Tax Work Off Program, and they earn a thousand dollars, uh, as part of the tax relief program. We, obviously, when COVID hit, um, had to reduce our staffing levels at all of our municipal buildings, and therefore, we weren't allowed to have our seniors come in and continue their projects with us. Um, based on our internal discussions, our recommendation was to pay all of those seniors who were not able to complete their hours. Um, it was by no fault of their own, could they not complete their hours? And in reality, because that was a guarantee of money and a promise to them, uh, by not paying them, they would have been eligible at this point for unemployment, which would have been a higher cost to the town than fulfilling our obligation to them under the Senior Tax Work Off Program. However, in talking with Roberta, we're still at a limitation on the size of staffing that we can have in our buildings, and I currently, even in the town hall, have two offices that are still on a rotating shift, because we can only have fifty percent of the office space. So we would like to suspend the program for fiscal year twenty-two. We won't have the lottery for this year, and with all intention of carrying it forward in the next year for fiscal year twenty-three.
Questions, comments, Gus?
The reaction, um, I'm guessing that this program's important to the seniors that participate in it. Um, and I'm not arguing for just free giveaway in fiscal year twenty-two, but I'm, are there no other ways of redefining service that those seniors could give to the town that would be outside, maybe their normal conventional offices? Where I'm coming from is that my guess is some of them actually are counting on this, and so I'm, I'm struggling with the fact that we're helping businesses to get through COVID. We're helping every. We're helping everybody to get through COVID, the only ones we're gonna make it worse for are our seniors. And I'm looking for a legitimate option to not suspend it.
I think one of, I'm sorry, I, I think one of the concerns of, of those sixty seven that we have in the T, in the work off program, seventy percent of those are based at the senior center, for work at the senior center and we're currently not open. And even when we are, we're going to be at limitations that may not allow them to come in.
Okay, and this, you said that it would be suspended for FY twenty two?
Right, normally we'd be getting ready in the next month or so to do the lottery for the following year.
Yeah, the lottery is usually done, well, October first.
So. Is there a reason why we couldn't just delay the, so I'm, I'm looking at and saying, what's the likelihood that everything will be shut down in FY twenty two and people couldn't actually do the work?
Well, I don't necessarily see the senior center opening up anytime soon with cases rising. I mean, I've been pressing Christine, you know, keep asking her, you know, can I bring small groups in? But I mean, right now with the cases going up around us, I don't necessarily wanna pe- put people at risk, I mean, it's.
Wait, 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 when does fiscal year twenty two starts?
In July.
July, but they work from like October, October to the middle of September. They, Yvonne and Georgia like to have those hours in completed so they can get all their paperwork and their billing and however they handle their end, get that in place. You don't run on a fiscal year, we run, we used to, we used to start, have the lottery on November first. And then they would start work January first, I was more on the calendar. But because, because some people couldn't complete their hours, we moved it back. So they would start, the lottery was on October first, so they could start sooner to make sure they got all their hours in.
So we could, I am getting an input from Georgia and Yvonne on this. Why don't we revisit this in July when we have a better idea of where we're going? This is an amount of money that's paid out of the Board of Processors overlay, so it's not a budgetary item that we have to put in an operating budget. So why don't we, they're suggesting that we wait until July and revisit it at that point.
Okay.
Can I ask one, one other question, though? Are, are there other options or other departments in the town that could use assistance that wouldn't require them to go to the senior center?
Well, they don't, they go to the schools, they go to the library, they go to the shelter, they go to, they've worked at DPW. Of course, they've worked at town hall.
We have the best ones at town hall.
Yep, they work the swap and the swap is closed, a lot of people volunteer at the swap, a lot. We had, you know, we've had individuals coming in to help us out at the, answering the phones, cause the phones ring pretty much all the time during the day. But, but they're, they're in their own spot and wearing our offices, so that seems to work out all right. But we can't, the gardeners, so they can't garden and do their work like they did around the center. I don't know if you've been by it during the summer, it was absolutely gorgeous, the backyard is beautiful. So they can't, they're done, you know, until the, the spring. So.
I'm just on, well, the reason is, cause I'd rather not suspend it, obviously. But here we are in November, making a speculative call on what next July is gonna be like. And if next July turns out to be a glorious July, or the summer is great because the vaccines work and everything is stated out in the spring. And we, the only reason we don't have this is because we decided in November that we didn't know for sure, so we canceled it.
Well, I suppose we could, you know, put it out there that we're going to have the lottery like we always do and the people do their application, they apply, we set the date of the lottery, we pull like we always do. And then if we're able to come July, then they can start working.
Well, the, the problem with that is if we do the lottery, you are making a promise to them that there is work to be done. And then if we aren't able to do that, then all sixty seven would be eligible for unemployment.
We don't wanna do that.
Yeah, I, I think that's why the recommendation was to hold on the lottery until we had a better idea.
That's what I'd do.
I mean, I'm okay with that, suspending it to July first. I mean, I don't see any, anything happening in the next few months of this, for us, actually, for what we're doing now, all our programs by phone and Zoom.
Okay, it sounds like we've got a solution then. Roberta, thanks for coming.
Oh, yeah, I've been waiting a long time for this conversation.
Yeah, I'm assuming you mean this evening and not.
Measure it hours or in days or weeks?
Three hours. Thank you very much, goodnight.
Goodnight, Roberta. Okay, action items, change order of, for Environmental Partners Group for work associated with the new water treatment facility project.
Mo has actually been waiting as well to speak to you.
Oh, Mo, thank you.
Hello, how are you?
How do you write the, how do you write the pro- the program so far?
It's great, it's great. Thanks for having me here. So the, the change order we're looking at is for the change on the contract for the water treatment facilities, final design with Environmental Partners. It's to help us get well four up and running for the, for the short term until the treatment plant in well three is redeveloped with that project. Well, four is gonna be utilized to take the, the edge off the system to help us. But we have to do some, the chemical feeding as well as some soil permeability testing, that what health is recommending. Environmental Partners has been our engineer on this for, from the start. So there, it's just a change order to have them help us with getting well four up and running.
What's the, what's the dollar amount?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand seven fifty.
Ten thousand seven fifty, yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Mine was me, me too. So I would move that we approve the change order in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars as requested.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
And then the next thing, contract with Eastern Minerals Inc. to serve as the primary supplier of road salt, well.
Yep, I have two contracts, one for the primary supplier and one for the supplemental supplier. So Eastern Minerals won the, we went out to bid with our consortium, we got a very good price again this year, forty three dollars and eighteen cents a ton, last year around forty five. And then the supplemental bid with Champion Salt would be the second contract. We would only use them in, in, in the event that Eastern Minerals cannot satisfy us during the winter months. And their bid was just a, just a little bit higher, forty three ninety four.
Didn't, didn't we approve salt contracts like?
Uh, we, we, we awarded the, 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 we, we did the award for the bid, but we never did the contracts yet.
Okay. All right. I'm good.
So I would.
My, my memory's working well.
So I would move that we approve the contract with Eastern Minerals to serve as the primary supplier of road salt and the contract of Champion Salt LLC to serve as the supplemental supplier of road salt. And who are we authorizing to sign? We authorize Christine Trueller to sign the contract on behalf of the town?
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Thanks, Mo.
I thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Mo.
Thanks, Mo.
All right. Take care.
Our next item is an agreement with Metro West Medical Center.
This is actually for real, we want you to sign this one tonight, I know we've been carrying it on the agenda for months, but this is, uh, this is not a test, this is actually ready to sign. Mark has reviewed it with Chief Carrico and we are good to go.
Okay, do we have any questions or can we have a motion?
I have no questions. So I move that we approve the agreement with Metro West Medical Center and author, we rather than Christine to sign this.
That's fine.
And authorizing Christine Trueller to sign it on behalf of the town.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Markucci, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes, sorry, yes, out of order there.
It's alphabetical, you're good.
There'll be a challenge to our vote. So we have a consent agenda, license for Zulus for November fifteen, beer and barbecue at Meeting House Pond and a license for Coolidge Corner for drive-in on November twenty one and twenty two. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
One correction, I assume, license for Zulus is November fourteenth.
Fourteenth, actually, I think we're working on an updated agenda. Pete, we have a couple of other things that were added to the consent agenda. Medfield Lions are looking to post signs for the Christmas tree sales and Medfield Youth Lacrosse looking to post signs for the spring twenty twenty one season.
And I would move.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna get to that, St. Edwards is requesting permission to use the Medfield State Hospital property to hold mass because they are doing a drive-in mass and their parking lot is not big enough, they would like to use the state hospital property.
Which, which parking lot are they gonna use, Christine? Do you know where the, I just care, I mean, that's fine with me, but I'm just curious where they think there's a bigger lot than what they already have.
So I think what they would like to do is use the grass lot in the front, similar to where we do, we have been doing the drive-in theater.
Okay, okay, okay.
So I would move that we approve the consent agenda as set out in the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, hi.
So that, other than the next meeting date being November seventeen, that's everything I've gotten on my agenda, Chris, anything else on yours?
I just have a, a couple of quick updates. We have our first affordable townhouse at Medfield Meadows, the lottery will be held, all the information is on the website. Go there for that. Arbor Day, we have moved to Friday due to the rain on Thursday. Although, given the way the weather's going, it could be snowing, I'm not really sure. Since I wanted to do it last week and so did Mo, it was seventy five, but that's another story. Veterans Day, there'll be an observance at, at Baxter Park tomorrow, there'll be candlelit luminary bags on display from noon until eight PM. All visitors are asked to wear a mask and exercise social distancing, there will be no official ceremony this year. And the only other item I had is, after spending the day at the election, I cannot thank the Town Clerk's Office, Marion Binaldi, Jim Mullin and all of our poll workers for just an absolute incredible job the day of the election. It's a really long day, they were there at five thirty in the morning. I don't count as a full day, cause I didn't get there till seven AM, they've made sure, they reminded me of that several times. But it's, it's a really long day and they just did an incredible job and everybody left smiling just as when they got there in the morning. They're really proud of the job they do and we should be as a town as well.
And there was a great turnout in the town, it was like over ninety percent of the town voted.
Correct. And it was, it was a long voting season between mail-in ballots, two weeks of early voting, including both weekends and the day of the election. It was a long time for them, but they did a great job. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Selectmen's reports, Gus, do you have anything?
I don't, the, let's see, I'm trying to remember, from the last one, we had a development committee meeting last week on Wednesday, which was the start of kind of our collaboration with our consultant. But right now, they, we're beginning to move ahead with the development of the RFP at her, her Bev's recommendation. We started off with the fir-, there's kind of a upfront part, which is sort of a introductory overview, I guess you could say, of what the intent of the town is. And initially, when she suggested we start with that, I thought that that wasn't really gonna get into the, the, the details of the discussions that we needed to have, and boy, was I wrong, that, that two paragraph first part of the document fueled a good hour and a half discussion about what it was we were actually all about. So we're off to a good start and trying to get our arms around that. The next meeting is scheduled for, no, we didn't schedule the next one, cause we couldn't find a Wednesday that would work. But presumably by early December, we'll have our next meeting there. I caught the last part of the Townwide Master Plan, public forum, last half hour, I caught that live and then I viewed the first hour. Pete, this is probably of benefit for you. I, my, my concerns about what the output of that committee is gonna be are not going away. There, there, there's a couple of points, I, I have the issue around the, the linkage with the town object, the, the goals that we have for the town. I think that's not as big a deal as I thought originally, because of most of the goals they have, at least I can, I can allocate them to what our town goals are, but don't leave that aside. I would make the observation, an awful lot of their recommendations have to do with what are fundamentally endorsements of things we're already doing. So they think the Affordable Housing Plan is good and the Medfield State, you know, reuse plan is good and that we should redevelop the hospital. And it's like, we didn't, we didn't need to bring in a consultant to help us figure that piece out. The two things that I'm probably most concerned about right now, one is that I, at least in what's showing up in the public forums, I'm not seeing any of the kind of hard-nosed economic analysis that says, okay, we've got all these great ideas, but which ones can we do and what do we think it's gonna take to do it? So to kind of putting the, putting the rubber on the road there in terms of the plan, I, I, I don't see anything there on that yet. And I did note that when Jay came in to see us before, I, I told him, I think that there is a vetting process with the Board of Selectmen that's gonna be more than just having one meeting in January, we rubber stamp a plan and it gets put on the town meeting. The, at the, at the forum at least, that, that's still the schedule that is being put out to the public. And that did nothing to make me more comfortable that they're gonna wind up in a good spot. But I'm, I'm flagging that now because there's time to fix it.
Yep.
Or we need to budget a very long time for the discussion when it comes to one of our meetings. Pete'll wanna make sure he eats before that meeting.
Townwide Master Planning Committee actually fed people at their first meeting. Well, not their meeting, but their first forum, public forum.
I think that's a hint.
Anything else, Gus?
That's it, that's all I have.
By the way, one of the major recommendations coming out of the Townwide Master Planning Committee is to, is to really do a look at the zoning, that that's, I mean, that's one of the few hard-nosed sort of things that, that they're.
Yeah, well, I agree, in addition to. You know, one of the, maybe you know the answer to this, Pete, one of the pieces that they recommended was we adjusted zoning to allow apartments over retail. And I'm thinking of like Larkins, there's apartments over there, if I go over across next to Nash and Grog, people live up there. I, I don't, I haven't looked at what our zoning is, but is, do you know what it is we would change over what it is we already allow?
I, I don't, I don't actually, I'm, I'm guessing that Larkins probably predates zoning in town. And the building on the corner, the, the monk block probably predates our zoning too.
Right.
But I mean, I, I, when I, so when I was on the ZBA, one of the last things I did was to re- read through all the zoning and come up with a bunch of recommendations for them, cause I've been reading the zoning for, you know, five to ten years pretty carefully. And so I, I made a list of all the things that I thought should be changed, but you know, like in, the building, in the intersection of West Street and, and twenty seven, I mean, you couldn't have offices in those buildings cause it wasn't permitted in that zone, I mean, that's crazy. I mean, you know, we should, we should allow office buildings in, in our.
They do, those are office buildings, the ones that are right there.
Yeah, they had, they had to get special permission or we had to change the zoning to, to do that.
I wonder if that's why they look like houses. Interesting.
Well, I'm not, the one that, the one I'm thinking of is where the, the gym is, the kids' gym is. And that looks like an off, like a building to me, like a commercial building.
Yeah, huh, okay.
But, yeah, we should absolutely allow that sort of mixed use with retail on the first floor. And we don't, we don't have a lot of places to put that now in the downtown, cause the downtown's kind of built out, but.
Right. Well, I just, I just couldn't figure it out, cause all the buildings that I thought of that were suitable all seemed to have apartments over retail. So I didn't, I didn't understand the recommendation.
Well, there's certainly a lot of, a lot of single story, I mean, the other thing you could think about for the downtown. And I think that, you know, what, what they're coming up with are recommendations to look at issues like that. And, and the planning board, Sarah was at the, Sarah Limkey was at the meeting and she said the planning board is gonna be looking at those types of things. And they actually had a term for it that I had never heard about before, but do a diagnostic. And they actually had a term for it that I had never heard about before, but do a diagnostic review of the zoning, I think they called it.
Yeah, well, anyway.
We need to do that.
Yep.
Anything else, Gus, or, okay?
So, uh, I'll echo, uh, Christine's comment about the election. I mean, that was, it was really incredibly good job, uh, done by everyone throughout. And for really election month, you know, we had, um, it was a long time and a lot of work. And so many people stepped up to volunteer, uh, to do a, a pretty, pretty great job throughout, throughout the whole period of time. So thanks so much to, to all, all of them, to Marion, to Jim and Tracy, everybody else. Portable Housing Trust Board met last Thursday. Uh, we don't have a ton going on, a couple of things coming up next year. We're going to be redoing the, um, the housing production plan comes up for renewal next fall in October of twenty twenty-one. So we will be, uh, updating that and they can present it to this board and to the planning board for approval before, uh, being advanced on to the state. We'll also be updating our, our two to three-year, uh, sort of action plan, procedure manual. Uh, sort of a shorter term synopsis of what we'll be doing, um, for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. On that front, we are, we are going to look at reissuing the RFP for the senior, uh, the senior development. Next to the senior center, uh, we're going to take a look at it and have some, some fresh eyes, take a look at that and see if, if there's some ways might spruce it up. To see if we can get some interest in it. Uh, at one point, going into last year's town meeting, we were going to put an article. The trust is going to put an article in the town meeting warrant to expand the authorization to potential senior rental housing there as well. I think the consensus of the board, at least in our last meeting, was that we'd stick with the current authorization for sale. Particularly given that Aura will be coming in, um, relatively close to that, that development with a rental. That likely, while not limited to seniors, likely will be attractive to seniors, uh, given the nature of the building. So, um, we're still trying to make some, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the, the concept for the, that prop, redeveloping the property, is it likely that the committee will move off the, uh, single level? You know, ranch duplex kind of a thing and go to multi-story there?
I think we'll see, whatever people thinks, you know, whatever flexibility would give, um. Maybe make it more attractive to a developer. Still for sale, still for purchase site, maybe some other kind of configuration, so that may be one way.
Okay.
Uh, to go with it. Um, we're still trying to work on the group home issue. I think the lingering issue really is finding a partner to actually manage your own, to group home. And so, um, we're still working, uh, still working on that. Um, and I don't think, I don't think we have any collective bargaining updates at the moment, so we continue to bargain collectively.
So I would mention, Mike, that I, I talked to Roberta at my, uh, office hours last Friday and she mentioned, uh, we were talking about the, uh, Hinckley property. And why it hadn't gone anywhere and, and, and she, I was asking her what size she thought people, uh, that she was aware of wanted. And she said a thousand square feet was the right size for her people, so that, that was smaller than I had thought, but I thought that was interesting information.
That is interesting. I'll convey that back to the people working on it. That might be a, a way that sparks some interest as well.
I also, uh, uh, would tell you that I keep looking out for, uh, opportunities for group homes. I look for properties that are like ranch houses or open lots that are affordable. And I saw one for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a lot. And, but then when I checked it out, it turned out to be in a deep hole. It didn't seem suitable, but. So anything else, Mike?
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay. So the Townwide Master Planning Committee, as, as Gus said, had, had the forum last Sunday. And then we had a meeting before that to get ready for that forum. Uh, the Energy Committee had a joint meeting with something, MEA, Medfield Energy Action, maybe. It's a new group in town that's, uh.
Environmental action, non-energy action.
Sustainability, um, and they're, and they're getting very active. They're actually MEAs having a, uh, I think it's, uh, on the November sixteen. Something decarbonization, if you can figure out how to reduce your carbon footprint if you go to that meeting, I think. Medfield Foundation, the Legacy Fund, has met and has started its, uh, Why I Give campaign. Everybody should have seen in the Hometown Weekly a couple of weeks ago, the first, uh. Insert by, uh, the Legacy Fund Community Board of Chris Cahill and Kathleen Cahill. Saying why they gave to the Legacy Fund. And, uh, the Medfield Foundation had a meeting since our last selectman meeting as well. And they decided to actually do an annual appeal this year for the first time, so watch your mailboxes for an opportunity to. Get solicited by the Medfield Foundation is actually quite exciting because it was, it was probably two weeks ago that it was decided, uh, to do. It was probably a week ago Monday. And, and the mailing's going to be in the mail, uh, next week, so. It's a nice looking mailing. And that's it for me. I think we're done.
Party's over.
Great. So I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.